Our county commissioners, board of county commissioners meeting to order. Let the record show, we do have a quantum present, but Commissioner Johnson is excused. With that, I will ask that everyone please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I am glad you stood by our United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any flaws or flaws.
Thank you. First order of business is approval of today's agenda. And I would like to submit to my fellow commissioners an amendment for the agenda under other, that we will ratify a contract that we previously approved with Congrey, Board of Study Group, for our wage study for our employees. We approved that, but we just need to ratify that contract so that the company can be authorized to move on, so I'd like to put that under other. And then in executive session, I would like to see us take a few minutes for real estate. Todd, does anybody else have anything to order? Alfred? No? Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve today's agenda with the amendment to ratify the contract with Congrey for the wage study.
Absolute.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Second by Mr. Lloyd, Commissioner Lloyd. And is there any other comments? All those in favor approving the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, move forward. Also, today we'll look at the minutes, approval of the minutes from December 30 to 2019. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I so move to accept the minutes as presented on from 12/3/2019.
Do we have a motion by Commissioner Lloyd to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, we also have the acceptance of the bills. I entertain a motion, Commissioners, to accept the bills, which is approval of the county vouchers, approval of M warrants, approval of monthly reports, approval of the bonds, approval of the hospital maintenance expenditures, and approval of the abates, rebates.
I so move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next thing we have is a public hearing by Ms. Berry. Good morning, Bonnie.
Good morning, Chairman.
What do you?
Resolution 19 dash 12 dash CL dash 01 is a budget amendment to increase the expenditures in the general fund and facilities maintenance capital by $1,187,230. The money will decrease the general county reserves, cash carryover $1,187,230. This is for the Lagoon Road Consolidated Facilities project. Jean had asked me to prepare this budget amendment, so if you have any questions, you can ask me or Jean, but we will have to open this up to the public.
We will do that. Okay, does Mr. Legarski want to join in? Are you okay there if there's any questions?
It depends on you guys, if you have any questions.
Okay. Commissioners, Mr. Smith, any questions? Details of that?
It's for the architectural services that we approved, and it's for everything to get them up through July, to be sure it wasn't budgeted, so we need to change the money in through there. So, it's for all the design and putting out the dispatch and everything like that.
Mr. Shanefield, any questions? Mr. Lloyd?
I guess, Bonnie, what would this take down, what would this take our general reserve down to, and also our cash carryover from last year?
I would have to look to see what that is. I know our reserves were around 40 million, I believe, and then the cash carryover, I think, was around 12 million total for all these years included.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
So, this, Jean, I guess the only other question I have is this would reduce, I know we're looking at like an $11 million cost, this comes out of that, so, God, that's all part of it.
Yeah. Okay, you all right? Good to go?
Yeah.
Okay. I believe at this time, we have to have a public hearing. So at this time, I'll open up the floor for a public hearing. Are there any questions from the public? Yes, ma'am. Please stand and identify yourself and who you're with.
I'm McKee Landman. I'm here, I'm a small business owner in town, and I've been contesting the I-DOCs fees that were just recently lifted.
Excuse me, excuse me, please. At this point in time, it's the public hearing for this agenda item. There won't be an opportunity for public comment from the public regarding any other topic?
Nope, that's our way. Let me know when I can stand up and speak, I'm not.
Ms. Landman, I would be glad to let you know.
Greatly.
Thank you. All right. Any, we open the floor again for public comment on this budget amendment, please. Referencing this transfer. Second time, anybody from the community wish to comment on this public hearing? Public hearing closed. Commissioners, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve, resolution 19 dash 12 dash CL dash 01. It's a budget amendment for a total of $1,187,230. It'll come out of the county reserves and go into the facility maintenance capital account. So, Commissioners, we have a, what's your pleasure?
Absolute.
We have a motion by Commissioner Shanefield to approve resolution 19 dash 112 dash CL dash 01 for the amount of $1,187,230. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Discussion, Commissioners. With that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Okay, with that, our next agenda item is a public hearing with the community. So, Mr. Bingham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The floor is yours. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the first public hearing that we have today is for Richard Brannich, it's a conditional use permit for the above-ground storage of fuel. The, we'll get right to the zoning map here. So, the location of this, where this is being proposed is at 1931 Yellowstone Road. So, here is Fairway Estates subdivision and a Mount Near subdivision. This is just north of the fairgrounds, and it's a commercial lot, a commercial area located close to the intersection of Mesa Drive and Yellowstone Road. The, any time that you exceed the amount of, that's allowed on a commercial lot for fuels, you have to get a conditional use permit. So, the maximum allowed in a, in a commercial zone is 500 gallons. This is not flammable fuel, it's actually combustible fuel, so it has a lower or a higher flash point, so not very flammable whatsoever, but the applicant is proposing to add an additional 500 gallons on the top. So, when you get into above-ground storage of fuels, you get into the fire code. When you get below ground, you get into DEQ type standards, and so when you have underground, there's concerns of leaking fuel into the ground and such. But with it above ground, the most important thing that you have is secondary containment. So, the applicant is proposing to, he has currently existing on the property two tanks, one for flammable, one for combustible, in the amount of 1,000 gallons, so 500 of combustible and another 500 of gasoline, flammable material. Here you can see the Fairway Estates subdivision located across Yellowstone Road, so there's quite a bit of buffer. The location of this tank is pretty much in the middle of the property, behind the existing building. Its R and D sweeping is the company that is asking for this permit. They're an asphalt servicing maintaining company. The setbacks are 20 feet from the property lines, which Mr. Brannich will comply with, and with his two existing tanks, he is also in compliance. So, it will meet all the fire code standards, it will far exceed the fire code standards. It's a very small amount of combustible fuel that's being stored. And that's just to show you another zoning map and the location, to show you that it is meeting all setback requirements. Here's some photos of the, of the property, and just to kind of show you the surrounding. One thing that's nice here is, it is showing that it's off Yellowstone Road, but we have a frontage road that's located here, and that's where the main access to the lot is, so it keeps the traffic off of Yellowstone Road. We don't foresee any additional traffic with this, it's not going to be a fueling type station, it's just going to be used for Mr. Brannich's existing equipment and vehicles on site. We went through all the standards and requirements, it meets all those standards and requirements. There were, the only comment that we had from, to our county code enforcement is that it will require an IFC fuel inspection by staff to ensure that the secondary containment's put in, and then tolerate an interstate gas and no concerns. On December 11th, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of the conditional use. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. At this point in time, any questions for Mr. Bingham, Commissioners?
Well done, as always.
Well, as done, as always. I got one question.
Yes.
Did the planning and zoning board or anybody find anything that, of concern? Nothing brought in or anything?
No, Mr. Chairman, there were no public comments, no concerns that were brought up.
Downsides, none whatsoever. Thank you. Appreciate the work they've done, so. Okay, with that in mind, at this point in time, we will have a public, we'll open a public hearing on a conditional use permit of storage of combustible liquid in excess of 500 gallons. This time, I'll open the floor for a public hearing. Anybody from the public like to comment on this particular agenda? Again, a second time, call for public comment. Floor is closed for public comment. With that in mind, felt Commissioners, we have before us a resolution, I believe it's 19 dash 112 dash 0 dash 01 for approval of a conditional use permit for the storage of combustible liquid in excess of 500 gallons.
Chairman, I move that we accept the resolution, the recommendation as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith to accept the resolution as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Mr. Lloyd, anything?
No.
Mr. Smith? Shanefield. Okay, with that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Bingham, you're still up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the next hearing is actually a notice, it's called a notice of intent hearing, and what that is, is by Wyoming state, when we change language to our code, we have to do a notice of intent hearing, wait 45 days, it's a 45-day comment period, and then open it up to the public, if there are any concerns of the language, they can submit comments to the land use office. So, today, we're not actually approving the language, but we're approving the notice of intent to move forward with the comment period. So, when we have the conditional use permit hearing for the solar energy utility scale over there by the Trona Mines, there were some concerns that came up during the process. One of those concerns were proper notification to the mineral estate owners such as the Trona Mines, and then the other was concerning comments from Wyoming gaming fish. We saw that there was an article in the paper concerning issues with antelope funneling and getting onto the Highway 372. And so, we prepared language, this has actually been, this has been approved by the county attorney's office and by the Planning and Zoning Commission, they did certify the recommendation. So, what it does at first is it puts language into our public hearing section, which, if you were within an MD1 or MD2 zone, which that, what that means is underground mining type of facility, that the applicant goes out and solicits comments from those mineral estate owners and gets them, puts them as a part of their application 14 days prior to the hearing. That way, there's actual proper notification, whichever kind of project, whether it's solar, wind, any type of conditional use, if they're within that zone, that they will notify the mineral estate owners. The second part of this language amendment is into the design standards in solar energy systems. And what this is stating is, is we're eliminating, which was such a specific requirement of, well, like that opening up to all federal agencies and others, and state agencies. So, if there are, at a minimum, these governments shall include the gaming fish, YDOT, BLM, those comments get put into their application. And what this does is it puts them, requires them to go out, get those comments, put them as a part of their application, and then include that, and then what it does is gives the option for the Planning and Zoning Commission, the board of county commissioners, to approve in whole, part, approve of conditions, or remand them back, the applicant, back to those agencies for consultation. So, it still gives the option to the board and the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve them, remand them back, or in part. So, it still gives you that ability to do that, but it does require them to get those comments. There's another part of the language amendment that goes into the actual application requirements, which requires the applicant to go out and get those, and collaborate with those governmental agencies. What was happening with the solar energy facility, the applicant, was we were trying to encourage them to go to the Wyoming gaming fish and address some of those issues upfront, and we had a difficult time doing that, and with the Trona Mines. So, we understand that's an important resource out there, and we need language in there to assure that they're going out and getting those comments upfront in advance. So, very, pretty straightforward language that we have, Mr. Chairman. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero to recommend adoption of the language. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, at this time. Open carry for questions.
Okay, questions, Commissioners? Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Shanefield?
No.
Mr. Lloyd?
Eric, just, it's my understanding that there's some proposed legislation out there to create more control on the solar, am I correct?
Yes.
Will this tie into that fairly well?
Well, it's hard to say, depends on what they do. I have seen some language that the state is proposing and, on a bill. And one thing is, is the, that would include the industrial siting council, which I think is good, that will add some, will add to us the ability to get impact fees in the future, because we saw a lot of impact from that last facility where there was over 500 workers out there, and we did not see really any impact fees with that. So, I think that's a good thing. The one thing that, I did see some setback requirements that were being proposed that were more restrictive than ours.
Okay.
So, what we would have to do is wait to see what would happen.
Right.
And then come back and make changes there. I don't see this language really having an effect on that bill, on what they're proposing, but the setback issue could make us come back and make those changes.
Otherwise, no concerns, I would say, in the public.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Bingham?
Yes.
We know that there is some movement in the direction to add on to the present solar facility on La Barge Road. Are these amendments in our language, by us adopting them, will that enlargement need to follow these guidelines?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
They will, okay. Yeah, I think it's a good, good change, I think it's a good addition, I think it's a living document, which we need so we can adhere to, plus, hopefully, the legislature comes through and does some things for the solar things with impact fees, as well as some other things that will help the state and the county, which we're all hoping could occur. But at the same token, I still want to always make sure that we're taking into consideration of industry in those areas, and make sure we listen carefully to their comments and their concerns. After all, Trona's going to be around 150, 160 years.
Yes.
And they'll, could very easily be our mainstay, the way some of the other extracted minerals are pairing out, but we need to make sure we find that balance and remain as a multiple-use county and that type of thing. So, I just want to say, I think it's a good move in the right direction, and I'm glad that it's still open for amendments, and I believe, my question, I guess to our attorney in this case before we move forward is, if people have looked at this, and because we presented it, we move forward, open it up for intent for hearing, could somebody during public comment time today talk about any of this, or do they have to?
Well, I suppose they could, you know, whether it's actionable or not.
No, it wouldn't be, I mean, public comment's not actionable.
Right.
But they could comment on it, if they wanted to.
Right.
Very good. All right, thank you. Any other questions for all Commissioners? At this point in time, I would entertain a motion from the Commissioners, oh, we got, do you open it for public hearing? No?
Yeah, you can open it up.
Okay, so, first thing, thanks, Alan. First of all, we'll open up the notice of intent, which is a language amendment, Sweetwater County, Resolution Section 4 and 7, and the notice of intent for public comments, so the floor is open for public comments, so this will be a time. Yes, please stand and identify yourself.
My name's Craig Rude, I'm with Ginner, and I think I spoke before you, or some of you at the, when Sweetwater Solar was doing the last project. I have nothing against this language, in fact, I'm excited we're trying to do something. We are trying to work with the legislature, but I would encourage you to continue to work towards keeping these facilities away from the Trona reserves. It is a very valuable resource we have. We are looking at growing in Sweetwater County, in fact, growing big, and these facilities will limit our ability to do that. We are not against solar, we're just, again, solar over the sodium lease, over the Trona leases. And I would also encourage you to, any of you who haven't been out to see that solar field, to go out and see it, and see the impact it has had on the animals and just the landscape, as well as being over our Trona reserves. So, I would just encourage you to keep working towards keeping these facilities away from the Trona.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rude. Any other comments from the public regarding this issue? Mr. Cott?
Just, would like to support the land use department in this, and certainly, having information upfront makes the process a whole lot more efficient, and that's what this does. Thank you.
Thank you, and that was Mr. Cott, founder of Orlando Public Plans Department. Thank you, Mr. Cott. Any other public comments regarding this issue? Public comments? Hearing's closed. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? With the notice of intent to make, to move forward with a comment period regarding this zoning resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the notice of intent to, for language amendments to the Sweetwater County zoning, Resolutions Sections 4 and 7.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any questions? If there's no questions, at this time, I'll call for the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Carries, notice of intent. Okay, with that, we'll move forward. Okay, with that, we'll move forward. Land use takes care of that. Okay, Commissioner reports. First one up is Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. First of all, I want to commend our Chairman, Charlie Brown, on his excellent Christmas tree that we have, and the holiday spirit he's brought with him. Appreciate that. It's good to see. As far as liaison work, I had a hospital board meeting after our last Board of County Commissioners meeting. A lot of time was spent on an insurance audit discussion, and I think I might be in the wrong business. Our auditor was in Hawaii and took great lengths to tell us how nice his villa was, and heard the birds chirping, and the surf crashing, and it was a cold day down in the basement of the hospital. So I was like, are we really going to give this man more money? But anyway, he's going to have a report returned by the 20th of December regarding the insurance. And he pointed out some issues that he thinks, whether maybe some weaknesses in some areas, and probably some overpaying in some other areas. And so it'll be interesting to see what he does there. The survey was taken in the lab and cardio department. They received excellent reports, and so I wanted to give them congratulations, as well as the overall strategic plan was looked at by a group and was given high marks for their overall strategic plan of the hospital. So kudos to them as they continue to press forward. And also welcome to Dr. Lucy Ryan in Pediatrics, a much needed addition to the hospital. She started back on December 3rd, so that's exciting to see the continuation of growth there. The airport board, they received a, approved, they received a YDOT grant for airfield marking equipment, so something that they can do themselves instead of contracting out, and painting the stripes and things, and there's all kinds of regulations of reflectivity and width and all those things. So they were able to do that themselves, and then they also approved a bid for that equipment as well. So it's good to see things moving along there. It's fairly quiet meeting other than that. And aside from that, spent a lot of time with our public and many of our realtors, talking about IDOCs. And so while we have, my understanding, little control over the fees that are charged for that, just highly recommend to our esteemed county clerk to find some common ground and move forward. Do what you can to get this behind us and move on. So with that, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Commissioner Smith?
Commissioner Lloyd? Yeah, it's been kind of a quiet couple of weeks with most of my boards meet on the third and fourth weeks of the month, and with the holidays, there'll be a few boards that won't be meeting. But I did meet with the library last night. They pressed forward with the renovation of the, creating the Children's Discovery Center at the Rock Springs Library, which I think will be a great addition to the community over there. And just pressing forward with the numbers, when you look at what the library has per door turns and people coming in a month, it's Jason and his group do a great job there, and deserve high kudos. Also, I met with Karen Kelly and the Juvenile Probation Department, just to get an update. Working on a file policy and some different things like that, but otherwise good. I do want to give kudos to that department, just because it's one of those core groups that you don't hear a lot about or realize the importance, but they play a great importance in cultivating this community and taking care of some of our younger guys. And I just think they deserve kudos for the work they do as a group and with the interagency work they do, so. Aside from that, lots of discussion with folks about Six Petty. I think I've now got 36 variations of how we could get down to the 80 to 90 million dollars, but I can hopefully say I could go to about 110, 115 million, but then that's where I struggle. So I'll continue to meet with groups and entities regarding that to come up with the best decision we can. Also, I met with multiple department heads, elected officials, Kevin, Assistant Deputy Attorney, John DeLeon, just about other issues. Also had a chance to meet with Irene Richardson, just to get some information on the hospital's kind of expanding her knowledge. Lots of individual meetings in that way. Also had a chance to meet with our county clerk, which was a good meeting and a good information, so thank you, Cindy. The last thing is, I've received quite a few thank you emails from our county employees who just thanking us for giving them some of that holiday time. And I just want to make sure we reiterate how important our county employees are. I've said multiple times up at this podium that the greatest strength in Sweetwater County is our employees at the county. And I think it's well deserved, and thank, you know, as much as I've received things from them, I want to make sure they know how much we appreciate that and their efforts, and I hope they all have great holiday seasons. But with that, that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Thank you. I guess I'm up. Lordy.
Yeah. Okay, with that, again, our report liaison meetings are going well. The, I think I forwarded pictures to all of you with the tower movement from the old hospital to the Justice Center. At the meeting yesterday, they, all that's left to do is a little bit of, well, not maintenance work, but just moving the rock and the fence around and finish above grade and that type of thing, and they'll be complete. So that project's well completed for them. Also, they had their audit, very clean audit, very good audit, so communications is moving along well and doing a lot of things. Before we go too much further, I would like to send out condolences to the family of Wayne Silvers. Wayne Silvers, 48 years old, former firefighter for the county, Sweetwater County, during the years of 2000, 2013, died unexpectedly from a heart attack, 48 years old. Our fire warden has been actively involved with the family, you know, being there to assist them, but our condolences from the county goes out to that family. Second of all, thank you, Commissioner Lloyd, for your mention of the employees. Also, the county has received, all of us have a number of Christmas cards, whether it's from elected officials in their departments, but also from businesses and individuals throughout the county. And I would just like to send all them a, not only a thank you, but a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and appreciate those cards. The next thing up is the CRUA Conference in Las Vegas, and you're wondering what CRUA is. It's a Colorado River Water Users Association Conference that's held yearly in Vegas. And what it consists of, it consists of the Colorado River Basin, which basically is made up of seven states, the Upper Basin, Wyoming, Utah, Colorado, New Mexico. The Lower Basin is Arizona, Nevada, California, also Mexico. And then it includes 10 of the 29 Indian nations in the basin as well. The reason I point out 10 of 29, 10 of those 29 have just over the past years been recently joining in. There's another 19 wishing, and it's to be part of it. All of it is about is the divvying up based on the water law of 1922, the rights to water throughout the basin. And this whole conference is focusing on a process to make sure water continues to flow, make sure guidelines and things are in place, and to not enter into any litigation over these rights, senior rights, pre-22 rights, junior rights, somewhat later than that. The scary thing about this is you sit through these things enough, you just get enough information where you think you can talk about it, but if somebody asks you a good question or says something, you probably don't know enough to answer it all. But it's huge. It's on the radar. If it wasn't for the snowfall that we had last year, especially in the Colorado Range and Upper Ranges in this basin, there was a near curtailment, which is a call on the river that could have taken place after January of this next year. Luckily, that has not occurred. But in that process, since 1922 water rights, there have been, I'll just say dates, where guidelines and regulations have been put in place that help meet the needs of these, of this water that flows from the headwaters of the Lower and Upper Green Lakes and the Green River. The water flow, unfortunately, that is divided up to 17.5 million, I'm sorry, not 17, it's, Mark, help me out.
Seven point five million.
7.5 million for the Upper Basin, 7.5 for the Lower, and then there's a million that's expected. So it's a 15 per over 10 year, per year over 10 years, so it's a 10-year average. That 10-year average that was put together in the compact was based on, if you look at the history of water since it's been tracked, that amount of water that the 22 compact is written on was the two wettest years. If you look at the years prior to that and since then, water supply's been lower. In fact, right now, we're in a still drought of 19 years of less water than we've had. So this whole basin, everybody needs water. And to put it in perspective, in 1940s, the same amount of water flowing down the rivers is the same amount today, in fact, less today, because of environmental reasons. But the population that that water served in the 40s now serves a population of 40-plus million people. So now we're to a point that with, that there are rules and regs in place that will expire in 2027, but in the meantime, throughout those rules and regs, there are some benchmarks that need to be met in order to keep the water meeting the needs of different things. So there's a focus coming out of the CRUA on drought contingency plans with an emphasis on developing demand management programs. I have two books, volume one, volume two. Volume two is the Lower Colorado River Basin, which is the three states and the Indian nations and the upper. And it's written very well, from at the very beginning, talks about and emphasizes some of the things I've just talked about, but also it interviews people from out of those basins. We're very, one of the individuals that's interviewed in both books is Mr. Patrick Hotul, who is a resident in southwest Sweetwater County and has served on Alliance for Farmers, and he's been on that board and that type of thing. So there's very good stuff in here, very good information, leading about the Colorado on that, and of course, you can really take it from there. For Wyoming, where are we at? Wyoming is in the beginning stages to design the management plans that have to be completed by the end of 2020, first part of 2021. And the demand management programs are, programs of volunteer, temporary, and compensated strategies to be used in lieu of a curtailment. So it's strategies, curtailment. And curtailment is a call on the river. There's a call on the river that'll be based on the elevations at Lake Mead and Lake Powell. If the elevations get too low in Lake Powell and Lake Mead, they will impact hydroelectric power that comes out of them, plus supplying the water to beyond into California and other places. So right now, where Wyoming is, is the stakeholders groups are meeting to talk about demand management versus curtailment. And curtailment basically comes down to the fact where the government steps in and takes over the water system and dictates that junior rights no longer have water rights, senior rights have them all. And in our case, you take a look at what powers the economy, in the state of Wyoming, powers the economy in Sweetwater County, its industry, and it's mainly junior water rights industry. And if we allow the government to pull in and say, hey, we're going to curtailment, and they decide to cut off all junior rights, and we impact our industry, so we've got to come together. I'll be, the thing we're finding out more and more as we look into this water situation, the senior rights, which are pre-22 water rights, 1922, nearly 80 to 90 percent are rights that are owned by agriculture. Also agriculture meaning in all the basin. Right now, senior rights to agriculture, California, gets 4.4 million acre feet of water per year. That's a senior right, if there are a call on the river, the first 4.4, they're very early. Also, first in time are Native Americans. It's beginning to show that their water rights are ahead of their best. So we're working hard. The demand management programs are being facilitated in state Wyoming, there's a call tomorrow, I'll be on it, to help not put, suggest individuals to sit on those demand management design groups and that type of thing. Just to keep in mind, the elements of the Upper Basin, drought contingency plan, first one is to protect the critical elevations at Lake Powell. That's our first one down the river. If Lake Mead is threatened for critical elevations, then Powell will fill in there. But my understanding is, if there's a curtailment and elevations are threatened in Lake Powell, the first upper reservoir to be called upon will be Flaming Gorge. Flaming Gorge has been identified not only as a research body of water, but it's also a body of water that's stored for meeting the needs downriver. Also, the second part of it, of the drought contingency plan is storage for considered water that could help establish a foundation for the demand management program. So it could be a storage spot for water and that type of thing. So that's the Upper Basin's elements. Presently, Lake Powell is at 52 percent of full capacity, and Lake Mead is at 46 percent of full capacity. If Powell drops below 3,490 foot elevation, which will impact hydropower production, and if Mead drops below 1,075 feet elevation, it will kick in water conservation in the So along with these, I have for my fellow commissioners, there are some great articles also on tribal studies that I'm working on reading. But also, there's a copy of the program, you can take a look at many topics, I've wrote notes. But at last, I would like to highlight this one. One program was a highlight of the 150-year Colorado River Expedition that basically was a John Wesley Powers expedition, and John Wesley Powers, we know, put in here in Green River, floated to Green, Colorado, all the way down to the mouth of the Virgin River. And this expedition that took place last summer was a, followed the same path, this group of 63 participants, spent 70 days on the river, and they left Green River Expedition Island and arrived at the mouth of the Virgin River, and complete report on them, and they took pictures and everything. So in my understanding also, is there's an excellent display at the present time at Sweetwater County Museum here in Green River of the John Wesley Powers Expedition. So that's where I was last week, representing the county along with Joint Waters Board members, as well as attorneys, and membership at that thing, Gene, what?
Eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred. We had a caucus, Wyoming caucus meeting, there were 14 in that room. Walked by the Arizona room, and there was probably 800. California was even more. So we know, you know, where there's numbers, there's power, I guess. So anyway, it's an ongoing point of emphasis, a very important water. One gentleman made a comment a while back to me, and kind of relates One gentleman made a comment a while back to me, and kind of relates to what my father told me, and generally, there's a saying in the West that whiskey's for sipping and water's for fighting, you know? And my dad told me many times, and that was back in the forties and fifties when I was growing up, he said, he says, "Son, I want you to know, there's going to be a day that water is more valuable than gold." Are we there? I think so. We need to protect our, our water for all the multiple uses. There's a heavy push on conservation as, in different communities, believe it or not, one of the leading groups for conservation is Nevada and Las Vegas, and it's amazing what they're doing. They've got ads on their TVs that are unbelievable, but it's coming. And we will continue for the county, I'll continue to stay involved as well as get the other commissioners involved as they need to. So if there's any questions, I'll take them, I'll tell you that, that's my report, but I think the Colorado River's users is very important to us, and that's why I took the time. Thanks for listening. Yep? Ms. Sheenfield, you up?
I'm up.
Thank you.
Um, my liaison work has been going well. I went to the Golden Hour Senior Center meeting last week, and they have their upcoming Christmas luncheon on the nineteenth of Thursday from eleven-thirty to one. They actually continue to have an increase in their meals served, both in the center and home services. I think this, I think she said nine, nine percent increase for the past month, and that's been consistent throughout this year. They are working on the construction of their tech center, which includes the removal of the asbestos. Anybody who's worked with asbestos knows it's not for the faint of heart, so kudos to them moving forward with that. I'm excited to see what their tech center has and how it's all set up when it's done. So it's very exciting. We did receive the Green River priorities that we requested during this consent meeting, and I sent that out to my fellow commissioners. I will also be updating Ram Center's new numbers in the spreadsheet and looking at, maybe rearranging Green Rivers a little bit in the spreadsheet, just so that it's very clear, and I'll send that out as well. I've had a fair amount of conversations from the public around the six penny process, and I think that we're moving along nicely. I look forward to moving forward with a little bit more information and getting going on even that coming into the new year. The museum is working with Gene on getting storage moved, and so thank you, Gene, for working with them and getting them finally to the spot where we can get them into some storage and get the, get all of the things that the museum has in a safe, good place. I've also had some conversations around iDOCS with some folks, and echoing what Commissioner Smith said, we don't have control over the fees. I've urged all of those who've reached out to me to speak with our county clerk and come up with a happy medium and move forward. I also would like to echo what Commissioner Lloyd and Lynn Lane said about our county employees. Many of them have reached out to say thank you about having the additional holidays. I just want to say, happy holidays, and I'm excited that we were able to give you a couple extra days to spend with your families, and it's the least we can do, so. I'd also like to echo what Commissioner Lynn Lane said, and happy holidays to those who've reached out to us, and I hope that we have a good upcoming new year.
Very good.
That is all I have.
Any questions? Okay, with that, oh, we're right on time.
I caught us up.
Huh?
I caught us up.
Well, I'm glad, because I, I should still, while everybody else is talking. Okay, our next topic will be county residents' concerns, and just like to remind the county, anybody from the residents who wish to have a concern that bring, you know, you can come up and relate your concern. It's a time for the commissioners to listen, but also, there is a time limit, so keep your comments to three to five minutes, no more than five, please. If you do come up and talk with us, please introduce yourself and who you represent and that type of thing. So with that, fellow commissioners, open the floor up for county residents' concern. So anybody from the county? Yes?
My turn now, right?
Yeah, would you please come up front?
My turn. Okay. You want me to come up here?
Please.
Okay.
And please introduce those that are with you and who you're...
We have.
Come on up and do it, please.
Okay. My name's Nikkei Landman. I'm a real estate agent and a small business owner.
Have them come up too, please, if you want to.
If you guys don't have to. We do have seven agents here, we have one on the way. We are contesting iDOCS, we'd like to be able to work something out with the fees. One of our deals, it's, it's been said that it's a convenience. The system's been in place for over ten years, and it is, it's convenience for us, but it's also a convenience for the people in the clerk's office, not having to look up and cater to forty, fifty, sixty people or a hundred and sixty-seven. So it's also not exactly free to everybody. Somebody that lives in Bar oil that wants to come down here, it's going to drive three and a half hours to come here to look up a record, and they're just as much as this county as the rest of us that live here in Rock Springs and Green River. Our county is the eighth largest county in the United States. We're actually larger than six states, so we're servicing quite a big area. And our taxes have already been implemented to service this. I think there's been a little bit of misunderstanding. I thought that they, they used U.S. imaging and was, it was paid, but it looks like they were not. But it's still the same system that's been in place, it has been upgraded, a fifteen hundred dollar fee. I understand there's a ten-dollar fee, but when you look at it in a sense of, if you get on Google to research something, and you have to pay ten dollars a day to research it, you don't know how much we're going to use it, people tend to use it. And the whole reason that we have progressed forward with this is because technology is something, and that's part of the progression for our society. So when we're implementing fees that are now going to make us go back to the old-fashioned ways, I mean, this is literally, people used to come down here and they sat here, and I'm sure that we had more employees down here to look up this information at one point in time. And that's what's going to end up happening. This is not going to save money. This is going to end up, we're going to need to employ people, that comes from our taxes. But also, you know, it's, the government officials are not exempt from this fee. So there's actually people using our government money to pay for this fee, which is another tax for us citizens. So it's not saving any money to, you know, or implement fees on this. This is something that's been established. And, and of course, we're, we understand, she did tell us that Tyler Technologies took off a little sooner than they were supposed to. It was planned to be started up on January first, and they kind of took off a little bit early, shot, shot in the dark there. However, it's still, I mean, on November eighteenth, I go to look something up, and all of a sudden, I got to pay a fee. And where this comes in handy is, there's a piece of property right now, for sale by owner in this town, that has over three hundred thousand dollars worth of liens on it. It's for sale by owner. You walk up and you have to pay cash for that. Nobody, I mean, the title company, that's the whole point, is to search this, right? Three hundred, over three hundred thousand dollars of liens. So I actually got a call on the weekend from somebody that was interested in this piece of property, and I was able to kind of go in and kind of look at some stuff in there, and then I got ahold of the title company, who obviously, this is protecting the public, right? We were able to tell this client, hey, if you buy this, you're going to absorb these costs. So our point as real estate agents, lenders, appraisers, everybody in the, in the real estate business, I know lawyers use this, it, our entire purpose is to protect the community, protect the public, that is our job. And this is, this is, I can't afford to pay for this fee. I can't absorb this cost, and I can't hand it down to my clients. I know that there are businesses that are able to do that, but again, we, we are our own customer. I mean, your kids might be buying a house from us, one of you might be buying a house from us. We, we are our own customer. I mean, in the title companies and the lenders, you're going to pick up those fees, probably more exorbitant than what you're paying for in the taxes and if you're paying a fifty hundred, but I can't personally make up for this fee. And I know that there's several of us, we have eight now realtors here. This is just, the, the amount's too much. We do understand that the monthly maintenance fee that was presented to me is a hundred dollars a month, and we do understand that a reasonable fee of fifty dollars or a hundred dollars a year to help put off the cost a little bit would be good, but this original system was implemented to protect and preserve our county records in this office. It was not put here for our convenience. It was put here as a public, because as a public, we own these records. And so that's why this was implemented ten, over ten years ago, because we go back ten years ago, we've been using the same system. And to have some becoming of changes, we're not very happy about it.
No.
So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Michelle, question for you. Is it, I'm sorry.
Makayla.
Makayla, thank you.
Yeah, do you want me to say it?
Yeah, please, would, I have a question.
Sorry, this is, this is my first time here, and now I'm starting to see it.
No. You, you made the comment contested. What do you mean by that?
Um, we've been challenging this, you know, we have, I've been in communication with Cindy, I've been in communication with Jeff, I've been, I've talked to him, and I am going to continue with this.
Okay. The word contested takes on a lot of meaning, so...
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm challenging these fees.
Okay.
And I'm going to challenge it as far as I can on it, because I, I think this is not serving the public, and we are the public, and I think it's important that we obviously have our voice heard on this.
Okay.
Because hopefully, it's going to affect us too.
And another question I have is, is, I don't know, I'm not a social network person, don't do social, social network, but have you, have you set up a fund me fee?
Yes, I have.
What's that for?
For an attorney.
So have you been in conversation with?
I have been in a conversation with an attorney.
So just to let you know, knowing that piece, that legal counsel, once legal counsel's contacted, I have to encourage our commissioners, commission, and that type of thing, that all conversations from this point on need to go through legal at, at that time. So we, we can't comment on it, because if you're in contact with an attorney?
He's not been hired. I just called to ask, ask him questions.
It could get hired.
Right.
Okay, so it's just like, you know, it's not a question of being hired, it's a question of being, have you contacted an attorney?
Okay.
The answer is yes. So we, we're, we're here to listen, we continue to, to encourage you to stay in contact with our court, because like you've heard the commissioners say, we did approve the dollars to buy the program, that's our job, approve the budget. But what comes out of any elected official's office, we don't have control over, we can just encourage them to continue to listen to their public, because after all, the public determines their demise, good, positive or indifferent.
Absolutely.
So I would encourage you, you know, I won't comment as commissioner regarding this issue, I won't tell Ms. Lane to do anything, and I encourage the other commissioners not to as well from this point on, because under advisement of our attorney, legal counsel is, once you're in contact with the legal counsels, as well as any of the other realtors that they're part of this, we want to listen, and we will listen, but we won't be able to comment. Do you understand?
Totally understand.
And I appreciate that, and I do appreciate you coming forward, because that's why we're here, and I thank you very much.
Okay, I appreciate the time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for lending over.
You bet. Thanks.
Thank you.
At this time, are there any other comments from the public? Public concerns, any other comments from the public concerned? I won't hurry, I'll let you think a little bit. I respect for you. Sure, come on up, introduce yourself and tell us who you're with.
I'm Jeremy Edman.
Jeremy?
Jeremy Edman.
Jeremy, okay, thank you.
I'm a co-owner of Haiku LLC. Part of the service that we provide to the community is we do three-dimensional scans, and one of the benefits of the iDOCS program is that you can look up and see the area or look, you know, of property. And we don't know how often we're going to get hired to do scans. Often, it can be on the weekend, and our pricing is based off of square footage. And so it's advantageous to us to be able to get onto this sort of thing, since you don't know, and I guess the new fee is a daily fee, or a weekly fee, or a monthly fee, or yearly fee, it's pretty exorbitant if you don't know how often you're going to have to use the service. You could end up using it three days a month for thirty dollars, or ten times a month, but you don't know you're going to have to use it that many times. And it gets, it gets quite expensive. Not to mention that private business owners, I'm sure weren't the intent of the fees. I mean, we all know that this is a, it's a mineral-rich area and oil-filled, they have big pockets, and typically, they do the research from places like Houston or Dallas. And I'm sure that that was probably the intent in mind, without realizing that there was so many private individuals that are interested in this in our community. So my, my concern is the forty-days process, where the, we weren't allowed to speak, we weren't allowed to contest, and it seemed like there was a vacancy in the proper procedure. And that's, that's my concern. I think there's a lot of people that would have voted, voiced something in a simpler, more cordial sort of way, so.
All right. Have you been in contact with, with Ms. Lane or county clerk?
I have not, no.
Okay, you know, and I, I would encourage you, sit down with her and talk with her with these concerns again, just so you can have that face-on-face conversation, but we do appreciate you coming and talking to us, and glad you did. Thanks for taking your time. Thank you very much. Any other county residents that would like to come before the commission with concern? Any other county residents would like to come before the commission with concern? That's my old teacher habit, five count. The session of the agenda is closed. I want to thank you for being here, and if anybody happens to leave from the community before we keep going, Merry Christmas. Do not hesitate, you know, concerning the iDOCS, continue your conversations with our clerk. Thank you.
I love your tree.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas. All right, with that, let's take a ten-minute break. Commissioner?
Present that as Mr. Bingham.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're finally, we're finally here.
[laughing]
So, just for the benefit of the public to understand what we're doing here. This project started a couple of years ago. We identified the middle Baxter Road area for development, for industrial development. The county hired University of Wyoming, some grad students to do some work out there two years ago. A 30,000-foot view of what type of industrial development would be appropriate out of this area. One of their recommendations was to move forward with a, get a more specific type of industry development plan, which is what we did. So, we, the county has worked with the two cities. We have an MOU between us, the City of Rock Springs, Green River, and the county. And we have a working group of staff that we've worked with those different agencies. And we went out for a request for proposal back in July. That's why I say we're finally here, because we went out for RFP once, got two responses, and those didn't pan out. And then we went out again and got five responses. And so, after our meetings with the two cities, we have agreed to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners to approve a proposal by Thomas P. Miller and Associates. This is a professional services agreement. I have run this through, John DeLeone has read that, proposed a couple of changes that needed to be made, and the contract is before you, and awarded the amount of $145,000. And what this will do is this firm out of Indianapolis will, and I want to say that they were the only firm that subcontracted with a local engineering firm, W.H. Smith, out of the five proposals. And in addition, they also provided an optional site selector and lead generation engagement plan that the others didn't offer. So, not only are they looking at doing a targeted market study, doing a phased infrastructure strategy plan and an implementation, but they're adding a market, an actual site selection and lead generation plan for us also. So that, once we get that, lays out a plan for us to move forward with this, with this site. So, Mr. Chairman, what I ask for today is to approve said contract, and before you, for a motion to approve that and authorize Chairman to sign. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you for the continued long work on this one, this one. Not the longest thing I guess we've ever done, but it's getting there.
I would just echo what Jeff said and say, I commend that you and Christina, when we only had two original bids, that you guys went out and started doing the extra work in due diligence to make sure this project came to fruition. And if it wouldn't have been for your extra due diligence, I don't believe we'd be here. So, I want to thank you two for the due diligence and the extra work.
Thank you.
I agree with them.
So, yeah, it's been a slow-moving, you know, this is a marathon, it's not a sprint, you know, something that's going to continue to move forward. And it's, it's the first step, you know, first steps in moving forward, and it's a project that's, that is supported by Rock, City of Rock Springs, City of Green River, and it'll, it's wonderful to get to this point, because once we move forward from this, then we'll be able to sit down with that same group and hopefully start looking at next steps and continue the planning and that type of thing for this area. So, I'd like to also commend you and Christina, as well as the entities of Rock Springs and Green River, the people that worked on it, to help get it to this point. I think rejecting the first two bids and going out to rebid has paid numerously, not only considerably less than what one of the other previous bids were, but the scope of work is so much better. So, I think it's paid off, and it's, it's a good service for citizens of Sweetwater County in step moving forward. So, thank you for that. So, fellow commissioners, what's your desire of this?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the contract with Thomas P. Miller and Associates, the LLC, for Sweetwater County Industrial Development Plan in the amount of $145,000, and also allow the chairman to sign all pertaining documents.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mr. Schoenfield. Any discussion? Commissioners, any discussion? One comment you'll take and notify the cities and that?
Yes.
And then, if any of them want an update, you know, just desirable as either councils, we can do that.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Yes, and I think, you know, we'll leave that up to them, but if you'll take care of notifying them. And thank you for your work, Christina, if you're in here, thank you for your work. There you are, hiding behind a tree. Anyway, but thank you. I really worked hard on that theory, and everybody gets it. Thank you very much. At this point, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Our next item is a Board of County Commissioners, events complex fair board appointment. And Commissioner Lloyd, I'm going to let you take the lead. Basically, it's to appoint a vacancy seat on the fair board, and I believe we have a five-year term that's expiring, and it's expired by a board member for the events complex. It takes effective January 1st, 2020. The individual whose term is up is available, I believe, for reappointment, as well as their other applicants. So, I'll let you take the lead, Mr. Lloyd, and tell us, since you're the liaison, your thoughts.
I do think there are five new candidates there, four new applicants, and Roger Torgerson, who's asking for reappointment. For discussing it with the fair board, they would like to recommend Roger Torgerson be reappointed. And just from an outside perspective, being the liaison, I've seen Roger be a highly active part of that board during my time, during the National High School Finals rodeo events. He volunteers, diligent, tons of time to be a part of that board, sitting in the board meetings with that group monthly. He's, actually, he kind of makes the meetings fun, but that's a side note, but he brings great insight, and he's very active in discussion. I think he would be a large loss if he wasn't reappointed to this board.
Okay, good. Other commissioners, Commissioner Smith?
I would follow the lead of the liaison from our commission.
I would like to, first of all, say thank you for everybody throwing their names in for this volunteer position. And I also, the ones that really went out of their way, wrote letters, you know, kind of went above and beyond, I appreciate that. It helps our decision-making process a little bit easier to realize why you want to be a part or a continued part of whatever boards you're putting in for. So, I encourage, as we move forward and open positions come available, I encourage those who'd like to apply to, give us a letter of intent and let us know, because it really does help, so.
Yes, very good. I can only echo all of your same thoughts, and just a reminder to the public that we generally have a number of board appointments in July. And so, keep in mind that if you're interested, you can contact or get online, contact the Commissioner's office. Sally will help with any applications or get them online and get them to us, but for the most part, we do have a number of application or board appointments that do take place in July. I'd like to thank those also that have showed an interest. Mr. Lloyd, if you would like to make a motion, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, I'd like to move that the County Commissioners appoint Roger Torgerson to the current five-year position on the events complex fair board.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lloyd to appoint Roger Torgerson, did I say that right, to the board position. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Schoenfield. Commissioners, any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our next agenda item is approval of a catering permit for Eden Valley Saloon on December 31st, 2019. And with us is our county clerk, Ms. Lane.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, thanks for being here.
Wes White from the Eden Valley Saloon has put in a catering permit for the night of December 31st, on behalf of the Eden Valley Progress Club, to hold an event at this establishment.
Commissioners, before you is a catering permit for Eden Valley, and it's for the 123211, 2020, 219, I'm sorry, 12312129. So, the applicant is Wes, the LLC. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the requested catering permit for Eden Valley Saloon on December 31st, 2019.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith to approve the catering permit. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schoenfield. With no discussion, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Lane. You bet. Okay, our next agenda item is ExxonMobil Expansion Project, and here to present to us is Ms. Lam or Ms. Ed, or who? We got all three of them. Come on up, and please introduce.
Okay, so, I'm Pam Heatherington. I'm the Wyoming Asset Manager for ExxonMobil, based out of Shoe Creek in Lincoln County. I've got Joe Hammond with me. He's one of the main contractors that's helping us out with our industrial siting permit.
Okay.
And a few backups in the event.
Few backups? That's great. Well, welcome. Merry Christmas. So, the floor is yours.
All right, so, we're, we're here today to talk about a project that we're working through the industrial siting process on. It's a roughly $260 million project. It's going to be an expansion of the facilities at Shoe Creek that will allow us to capture some of the low-pressure, low-quality CO2 that is vented from our facilities today. We do have a handout that we'll share with you that goes into a little bit more detail on where the project is going to be located. But essentially, we'll be installing additional vessels, piping pumps, and compressors that will allow us to capture that low-pressure CO2, bring it up to sales line pressure and sell it. We're also going to be drilling a disposal well that will allow us to inject any CO2 that we're not able to market and sell. And so, the facilities are going to be installed at the Shoe Creek facility, which is in Lincoln County. But we're also installing a sales compressor in Sweetwater County, so we've got a building that just sits across the Sweetwater County line, that's our CO2 compression and sales building. There'll be a large compressor installed in that building, which is why we're talking to you folks together.
Cool, thank you. It's exciting.
There's no questions on kind of a high-level overview of the project. I'm referring to a handout, where we've got a little bit of the maps and things. The project description and community benefits is probably the first one that's worth taking a look at. And so, I'll draw your attention to the box in blue down at the bottom, and that just talks about the investment. So, I mean, we've kind of been referring to it as roughly a $300 million project, but all of the jurisdictional components that come up roughly about $260 million. We'll have a peak labor force of 388 when construction is building, and then it will add 11 permanent positions to the Shoe Creek facility. And then, there's a bit of an estimate on the expanded task base there. So, positive, so, any questions?
Right, very positive. Thank you.
Should be good news for both Lincoln and Sweetwater County.
Where, where do you imagine the 388 people will come from? Is that, you know, Exxon bringing in from outside, they're already qualified, so we're going to bring them here?
Yeah, a big portion of that is going to be contracted later from outside of Wyoming, but there will be some local labor hiring as well, kind of estimating that.
It's roughly maybe 10% is local.
Okay. Then, permanent jobs obviously permanent here.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Good, good.
And then, if we wanted to have a quick look at the map, it gives you a little bit more detail. A purple line that kind of runs down the middle of the map, that's the existing feed gas pump line that comes down through Sublet County and our Black Canyon dehydration facility. The green box there that says existing Shoe Creek plant, and you can see just across the county line is where the CO2 compression building is. The dotted yellow line is the new pipeline out to the CO2 disposal well that will be building a well pad and well facilities.
Wow, wow, great project.
Questions?
Oh, not at all.
And then, depending on how technical you want to get, we can go through the actual flow diagram, so the engineer may get excited about this, but everybody else shares that information. But the long and short of it is the red boxes on this diagram, you know, the new equipment that you're installing. And so, basically, what we're doing is taking our CO2 select cell recovery process down to a much lower pressure, which allows us to absorb that low-pressure, low-quality CO2 that's going up the end stack today. And then, of course, we have to get it back up to a pressure that we can put it into our sales pipeline. And so, it's a new low-pressure flash vessel, a big tank that allows the CO2 oil off at a much lower pressure, and then a compressor with multiple stages to get it from that during low pressure up to the pressure that we can get against of the CO2 sales pipeline. And then, out at the CO2 sales building, which is the portion that sits in Sweetwater County, because of the additional CO2 sales volume, we'll have another CO2 sales compressor as well as a pump, so that if we can't sell that CO2, we have a disposal into that well.
Question? I have one.
Sure.
Okay, you keep talking about CO2 cells.
Yes.
Market look good for that presently?
It does look good right now. We haven't gone through a formal RFP process. And so, we'll do that probably early next year, just to understand the market for additional CO2. The infrastructure as it exists today will allow us to sell that CO2 if we have a market for it. And so, we should have a better understanding of that before we go to final investment decision, which is expected probably in the first half of next year.
Very good. Thank you.
It's a mole seed.
It takes the water out of any, any water or contaminants go into that well, so.
Thanks. Just not just made up.
It's not made up, man.
Mr. Schoenfield?
So, you provided the community benefits, and can you break that down into how much of that roughly $300 million is going to be spent in Sweetwater County specifically?
So.
It's an apple box.
Yeah. It is.
Oh, $10 million. Okay, I got it.
Got it?
Got it, thank you.
Got it, question answered. Okay.
Yeah, roughly 50/50, which means pounds on major.
Wow. This is a great project. Good timing. Very good timing. I'll take a question from the floor, from our astute treasurer.
Mr. Chairman, Rob Slaughter, Sweetwater County Treasurer. I'm just curious as to the timeframe, when you're talking about the onset of the project and when you anticipate being finished.
If you can, one of these.
Yeah, we can definitely give you a hand, but we're kind of a rough schedule, but the industrial siting product application is going to go in early next year, so it's January. We have a hearing planned for early April, and depending on sort of the regulatory process, we hope to start construction as soon as August, so next year.
With full completion, you anticipated that were the case of?
Start in 2022.
Soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Good question. Thank you, Mr. Slaughter. Very good. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, question, Commissioner Smith?
Land disturbance, do you already own this land? Is this new construction? Have the compression facility here in Sweetwater County?
We own the land where the Shoe Creek processing facilities is, as well as the CO2 compression and sales building. And that's where the bulk of the construction is. We are working on it right away with the BOM to build the CO2 injection pipeline, as well as the well pad.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Very exciting.
It is. Okay, go ahead, continue.
Joe, if you wanted to add a few comments, just in terms of the process. Brian as well, about the second process.
Yeah, I'm just going to add to what Pam said. I'm Joe Hammond with Jacobs Engineering.
Thank you.
And we're helping ExxonMobil with the application for the industrial siting permit with the state. And I think like we mentioned, from a material standpoint and sales tax at the layer, the numbers are pretty close to this in this blue box. We're still working on that in application, but it's, it's roughly, these are the pretty good numbers on estimated sales tax in Amber Larren. And it has to do with the sort of the four parts of the project, like Pam mentioned. There's the CO2 sales compression, where a lot of the equipment is in Sweetwater County, that that equipment would be delivered to Sweetwater County. And then, there's the equipment at the Shoe Creek facility in Lincoln County. That's the other big portion of the equipment. There's the CO2 pipeline that is non-jurisdictional from the state industrial siting point of view, but it's still part of the tax and the sales net of the land, of course. And then, there's the CO2 disposal well in Lincoln County. So, those are sort of the four areas of construction that come into sort of the financial picture, the $260 million. It is 29 months of construction, so it's an average workforce of 162, I think, over that 29 months, from August through December of 2022. So, a nice, long duration. Also, I was going to mention that ExxonMobil is looking at, as we submit this application in January, ExxonMobil is looking at a phase two of the project that would be under this industrial siting authorization, that is about double the size. It'd be like another, at this point, the details are not known, but it'd be the same general project area, the same facilities involved, but it would be a second phase that would be another roughly $250 to $300 million. That would be in the, could even start within the same construction area.
Wow.
So, it could be, but that's not approved by ExxonMobil yet. It's under discussion.
We're in the early, early stages, and just looking at the viability of the project. Hopefully, sort of by the first half of next year, have a little more certainty on that.
Well, we'll look, we'll look forward to hearing about that one. I mean, it's just amazing, your investments in the Sweetwater County, Lincoln County, south plus Wyoming. What it does for our people.
In the Sweetwater County.
We get a crane out of Lincoln. Get a crane and lift it all over. Anyhow, but anyway, it's just amazing, just amazing. When I look at your construction operation workforce, you say an average 160, but reality is, we'll hit two bump periods, where one will be over 350 for six, seven, eight months, and then, numbers will go down a little bit, and then they bump back up for another five, six months of, oh, about 225, which is pretty phenomenal, pretty phenomenal, you know.
Yeah, really, two, like you say, two big peaks in 2021 and 2022.
When I look at it, it makes sense. It's construction season, the summers, the springs are awesome.
It's tough to build things when it's, as it is, it's tough to build things.
Oh, I know. I'll tell you what, we do what we got to do, don't we?
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay, go ahead, we didn't know.
Well, just a couple of things I was going to mention. In our application that will be going in, right now is scheduled to go in on January 13th.
Okay.
To the division. The counties, cities, other parties would be getting copies of the application at that point. It sets up a hearing date of April 9th, expected to be in June, but to be determined, but it's sort of the schedule right now, application in January 13th, hearing April 9th. I would suggest that Sweetwater County would want to be working with Lincoln County as far as the impact mitigation, impact assistance related to that. And so, the schedule for comments, it's really going to be in that January, February, March period, that any comments of the application would want to be coming into the division. And Brian Love at the division is going to be talking more, a little about that process. But I think that's the, the general schedule we have.
All right. Now, thank you for sharing that, because that was one of my questions, what the schedule looked like. Eric, did you get all that?
Yep.
Okay, we, we got the corners already, we're, we're, we're the boots on and we're running. You know, it's exciting for both counties, and, you know, it's just wonderful what you're doing for us. Can't tell you that enough, I can't, just cannot. So, other questions, fellow commissioners, at this point in time? Okay, very good. Next.
Mr. Chairman, Brian Love at Industrial Siting Division, Administrator.
Ah, good.
So, luckily, you folks have been through the new process once already, so you have a little bit of the experience, which most counties have struggled the first time at least. Lincoln County will be the lead on this project, so they will be reaching out to you. As Joe mentioned, the schedule, if you remember from last time, once that application comes out, you've got about 30 days to put together your unmitigated impacts and work out your MOU, you know, 30 to 45 days. And we need that, so that if you can't come to agreement, we have some work to do. So, hopefully, you'll be able to do that. So, I would encourage you to start thinking about what those unmitigated impacts would be, and start putting those numbers together early, and reaching out to Lincoln County and trying to do some coordination.
Fellow commissioners, questions on that? I've got a couple, please. Generally, if I remember correctly, with the TransWest and the Gateway Industrial Siting, not all of Sweetwater County was involved in both of those. It was Sweetwater County and Wamset, basically, that type of thing. Do we have an idea what parts of Sweetwater County is going to be part of this industrial siting?
We will determine the area primarily affected after we see the application. Right now, certainly, based on past history, that's one thing nice about a project that's an expansion. You have had a project already, and so you have a pretty good idea where that workforce is going to stay. We will be working with the applicant and looking at those numbers from previous projects, so we'll have a pretty good handle on where that's going to happen.
Pretty good. Well, we'll be looking forward to seeing where that's at, and we've got really great staff here that been through it, worked through it with the attorneys, County Attorney's Office, as well as our departments, and we're looking forward to being, to be allowed to be engaged with that process, and we will, we'll be, we'll be team players, without a doubt. Thank you. Anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you, Brian. We appreciate it. That's good news, good news. Okay, Pam, anybody else?
Uh-uh.
Joe, anything else? Well, you guys look as excited as we are, so, you know, there's just wonderful things about Christmas, and you presented the county with a, two counties, some great, great news and great holiday spirit, and we appreciate it, and appreciate what you do, and that type of thing. So, Pam, sometime when we're at an enterprise meeting or something, I just want to visit with you, and it's just, I need to get some better knowledge about a couple of things, if you don't mind. Thank you, appreciate it. All righty. All righty. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for the information. Did, I might ask this question. You have extra?
Sure.
Did anybody not get a handout that was like one? Okay, I think they're good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Thank you. What do you think?
Awesome.
Awesome. But I didn't realize there could be a phase two.
I didn't want to hear that either.
Didn't hear that either. Save them all the money. Okay, let's go ahead, and we'll move forward into our next agenda item, which is TAB H, which is Facility Condition Assessment Report, which is gonna be presented by Ms. Joe Gursky, our Public Works Director. So, Ms. Joe Gursky?
Welcome. Good morning. Thank you for being here this morning. Thank you. What this kind of is, is just a recap, a very high-level view. Back in July, you guys approved us to go forward with this. And Duke Solutions actually hired Alpha to come in and actually do their facility assessment. They use them all the time. The interesting thing about Alpha is I really didn't know, I had a good thought for Duke Solutions, didn't really know about Alpha very much, did a little bit of research on them. Their finished project they did this year was for the US Army Reserve's 81st Regiment Division, and the report that they did was, now, was 7.25 million square feet, 400 facilities over nine states.
Wow.
So when they came in and did our report, I thought it was pretty interesting how efficient they were. They actually did our report in a little bit over three days, or site assessment, over three days. And what that incorporated was the justice complex, all the buildings out there, you know, the sheriff's attention, circuit court, purchasing, the evidence bay, attorney's office, all that. They did this building, they also did HHS building. They took 3,800 pictures. They documented 268 things that we actually need to look at and actually do preventative maintenance schedules for, and stuff like that. So it was a pretty amazing process to go through. The neat thing about it is, each one of the individual components have its own report that travels in this. The other thing, too, is it all rolls up into what I call our capital going forward for the next 20 years. This is a draft report, there are some things we're gonna move around. You know, their dates were 2019, we're gonna move it to 2020, so we actually got something to go forward with. So what we did, and this is a little bit hard to see, we decided early on in the project to go off the BOMA standard lifecycle, instead of the Department of Defense lifecycle. And in doing that, why we did that is, the Department of Defense lifecycle, if you know anything about the Department of Defense, when they build stuff, they build stuff to be bomb proof. So therefore, some of their lifecycle costs and their lifecycle timeframe are out a little bit further than a normal building. With the BOMA lifecycle, BOMA stands for Building Owners and Managers Association. It was founded in 1907, and all the resources that they have since basically 1907, their members own about 10.4 billion square foot of office space and space like this. So all the lifecycle costs are based off that 10.45 million square feet. So I thought it gave us a little realistic approach on how our buildings were, instead of using Department of Defense stuff. But basically, you go down, and they just break everything up into what expect life cycles, and we go to the next phase. What we did is, we prioritized all the needs, and if you actually look at the high priority needs, basically, those are mostly life safety. Stuff that can happen, if it's not taken care of, it's bad. Main branch electrical wiring, the big electrical system, the service distribution lines that come in the buildings, of course, all your fire protection, and then your HVAC cooling and roofing. Most people don't look at roofing as a high priority. If your house roof leaks, you have a problem. The same way in these buildings, if the roof leaks, we have a major problem. If it's in, they cause all kinds of problems. The medium proportion of it is what I would consider not, not life safety related, but important, you know, plumbing domestic water, something like that, where it's more of an inconvenience. If something breaks in that, you know, we can shut down a bathroom, we have other bathrooms, stuff like that. If that exterior door isn't applying ceiling right, we know we can do that stuff, but it's not really a life safety. But most stuff that they went through is all the, what I would call the dressing. You know, how's our drywall look? How's the ceiling tiles look? How's the lighting pictures look? Because that's not a convenient convenience. You know, flooring, vehicle payments, how's the exterior look, everything like that. So when they went through that, we prioritized everything with those numbers. And what it boils down to through the next slide is basically this. And that's the square footage that we have, that they've actually looked at. The total of these, this will be transferred in 2020, it's $331,000. Basically, that's a new roof here, and the boilers need to be replaced. And we knew that ahead of time.
Question?
Yes.
With the boilers needing to be replaced, don't we have it in the show?
We already have that contract, and the roofing contract will be going out to bid early next year, so we can get them done. We were gonna try to squeeze the boiler project in this last fall. I got nervous, wanted heat in the building, so we're gonna push that off until June, so they can get it done this summer.
Good move.
Yeah, I thought it was.
You're remaining popular.
I'm just popular as I can be.
That's popular, isn't it? We've been less popular without you. We prefer no phone calls.
I, yeah, I actually had this nightmare scenario where I was handing milkhouse eaters to everybody, and the power system was getting overloaded, and it was gonna be a bad thing. And, you know, one of those things where you actually get lucky, we had a cold snap early on, and it worked out, so hindsight's 2020, that's a lesson.
There you go.
The interesting thing about this, and we actually looked into the 2019 FCI percentage, all those are zeros. And I was kinda scared when I first looked at that. There's actually a graph in your guys' packet that has two straight lines on it. I don't, I've never seen a graph with two straight lines on it, right? Figuring, like, can't understand something that gives that. Basically, what happens is a facility condition index, if it's a zero, that means a building is in good shape. Just so you guys know, zero to five is good shape, five to 10 is fair, four, 10 to 30, and then critical is anything over 30%. And that's based on the value and how much you have to repair. So when we actually look at an FCI of zero on our buildings, we're doing a good job. When you actually translate that, the interesting thing is, when you go to 2020, this will be changed to 2025, when you look at that, if we put in $1.8 million into these buildings, our FCI is still on an average of zero to six, basically, depending on the buildings. The interesting thing is, when you look at the Sweetwater County Courthouse, and if you actually look at the Justice Center, you gotta remember, the courthouse is built in the early 60s. What a lot of building managers say is, it's going through its midlife crisis right now. It is. When you actually look at the Justice Center complex, the jail's 15 years old this year, the purchasing building's 10 years old this year, it's just about getting to its midlife crisis. So a lot of those things, you know, if you look at a real system, 20 years of the real system, we have to replace it at some point. And that's the neat thing about this, is when they come up with this, based on all the standards, we actually now have a time plan and cost out for the next 20 years for these buildings. And kind of setting up, I hate to say it, but maybe some further planning out, five to 10-year goals, I've always been wanting to do, so we can plan for the future. You know, we'll leave some of that up to you guys, as far as how much you wanna put away for the future. That's all a theoretical discussion, but at least we have some dollars now, and we have some sense, and we can actually make sense of it and a plan on what to do. You know, it's one of those interesting things with engineered systems, they say it has a 20-year life. What does that mean? Is it gonna give away 18 years? Is it gonna last 25 years? Don't know. But it's got a 20-year life. You do know that. You know, with some of those up here, you actually look at our weather, our weather patterns, something like that, it's harsh. It's harsh on everything. So most things are right around there.
Mr. Gursky, how, speaking of, if we wanna put money away for something like this, how much can your budget withstand?
Can my budget withstand?
Yeah, so we can take...
I don't know yet, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to do this, is because I wanted to get down to a realistic budget, so we knew.
Oh, okay.
Instead of having cash carryover, then we were given that.
So you'll let us know how much we should take out of your budget and put away for these things?
Unfortunately, yes, I will probably have to.
I was just curious. Thank you.
But Danny's got a deep, like, in some areas. Well, I guess I'm just finding you now.
Yeah.
So the interesting thing about that is, when you actually look at the courthouse, it's getting in that FCI range of six.
Yeah.
You know, but the average is still a three.
True.
The interesting thing about this, and why I bring this up, is we have a lot of other buildings out there. We only give what I consider the core buildings for the county. We have a lot of other buildings out there, we have a lot of component unit buildings. I'm prefacing with the budget, that I would actually like to do this to all of our buildings, over like a three-year period. Right here, just so you guys know, it costs about 20 cents a square foot, it's about $40,000 to do 199 square feet. That's because it had a detention rider on there, so it was a little bit more expensive. It's usually between 13 to 16 cents a square foot, but it provides a bit valuable knowledge to us, that can give us planning.
Are you thinking, if possible, you will budget money?
Yes.
In the next item?
Yes, the next, the next thing, and then you guys can decide, and I'll have a list of buildings in there and their actual cost, if they're possible.
Thank you.
The other thing about this, and I think it provides, and this is kind of going along with the Duke Solutions that you guys approved, the interesting thing about this is, once we got done doing the 268 critical components to all these buildings, we looked at what the preventative maintenance schedules actually show, and if we use all the preventative maintenance schedules for all those components, we have 3,800 man-hours just in preventative maintenance, which is a lot, you know, that's our guidance report on a four-man staff. So looking into that, it'll help us be able to plan stuff better. You know, all those don't have to be done at the same time, but a lot of the life safety stuff and everything like that, so we have to make sure that we're planning, that we're doing all that stuff, you know, in and of us to be able to make sure that we can get all that through.
Could.
So we'll do the next. Next slide, that's basically it. I don't know if you guys have any questions. It was a worthwhile exercise for me to go through. You know, I'm really excited for the Duke Solutions to come on board. We should be going live about the second week of January, with some in-house training in the middle of February. There'll actually be plenty of people out there to train, all the maintenance staff with the studio and facility maintenance on this, and use it so we can actually get some real cost, based on square foot, based on buildings, what's definitely possible with this.
Great. Questions, commissioners?
I have a good question.
Mr. Schmidt?
It looks like this building is, you know, for its age and fairly in good shape. Are there other concerns? You know, we talked about the ADA access and other things, I don't know, seismic-wise, whatever. Are there other issues with this building that we're...
Not really, no. Really, really, it's a very well-built building. There is some issues with some windows and some exterior finishes that we're seeing degrade. I hope you guys have been back here, and you can actually see some of the tiles and stuff like that, that are, they're showing everywhere. The front lockway, if you look at it, ADA, we're fine on that. Once the city green ever goes through, you know, and does a degree, or the hard part about it is, we're on about a 12% slope, pumpable size of building.
It's tough.
It's really tough. But we have to be compliant. And we've been talking with YDOT, talking with the city green ever. Once they go out and touch flexing wardrobe, we have to bring, we have to comply to it there. So we're gonna be doing some more stuff out front. This pad out front, did you guys notice, this pad's never iced up, that pad's always iced up. A little bit different climate condition, I guess, as far as wind. They both have electricity underneath them to heat the pads. This one doesn't work very well, we've had electrician boulder and stuff like that, just doesn't work. This one works great, they have the temperature on the pad is about 58 degrees, we're gonna turn it off. This one, they have the temperature of about 37, just not enough to keep up, so.
So we don't need to rebuild the building here?
We don't need to rebuild it here. You know, I'd like to say, yeah.
Sure.
There's no arena tour, it's got shed bones. You know, most of the stuff is cosmetic with a lot of these buildings. The other thing that would be interesting is, over the next couple of years, I'll be doing surveys as far as how much traffic we get through the different doors. I think that's important. Most people don't think of that, just like a highway. You have the normal people coming in our building. If you look at the detention center, the detention center is a 24/7, 365 facility, but houses people that typically aren't happy with their bed. It's a very, I call it a bit of abuse building, there's nothing we can do about that. That's what, we have one guy, that's based, all he does is go around the detention facility and fix stuff every day. That's his, that's his draw, that's what he has to do in order to keep that building up. This one's a little bit different, it's more of an office building, but we do have a high percentage of traffic, as far as pedestrians and that. You know, one of the things I've been working with, caring with, is how much traffic do we have coming through this door, or spilling downstairs? What's, you know, can we maybe push up our waxing schedule one or two years, or do something like that? You know, one of the things I've learned since doing this job, it's kind of interesting, you know, everybody, when you walk into a public building, you see carpets up there. Well, how many steps does a human take before anything falls off there? Do we need to extend another carpet out 20 feet? Little stuff like that, that we can make it look better, also make it easier on our employees, so they're not down there waxing like trees are full all the time, or something like that. So just trying to get a little bit more efficient, get a better understanding on the moisture that is of the facilities, and in a rational way, so we can, you know, get this out of the way.
Great. Anything more, Commissioner? Mr. Lloyd?
No, no questions, I think. Gene, I think the report's very well-written, and you and I have talked about the Duke Solutions on the side, and I think it's a great program. I, what I get excited about when you talk about is how this helps you plan 10 to 20 years. And I think this is something I know Commissioner Wendling started talking about prior to me being elected, and I think this is great base to really start coming in ways and bringing departments together to come up with our own strategic plan as a whole county, and I think this just ties into some of those, how to build capital projects and such into that. So I think it's a good base to start, a conversation that's started, that needs to continue to grow. So thank you.
I agree. One of the things I'd like to dovetail on, you know, if you actually look at our budget broken into, you know, payroll, operating, and capital. Payroll, you know, without the HR, the retirement, you guys, I think we're doing what we can. Operating is such a small portion of the budget. Capital's our other big one, and we really don't have a good handle on that. So, you know, the planning that we're doing, not only on facilities and the roads, I think will go a wrong ways in leading us in the future, I guess, to use this whole setup.
Anything else, Commissioner Lloyd?
Commissioner Shainton? The strategic planning and being able to use this to help set our county up to be successful is music to my ears, so thank you. I'm very excited to continue to see this play out, and to start looking towards, I mean, we're finally getting to a point where we can start looking at strategic planning, because we're starting to get some numbers in, we're starting to get some idea of lifespan of buildings and upkeep and that kind of stuff. So thank you, I appreciate it, I'm excited to move forward with this. That's where we need to go.
Yeah, I, anything else?
No.
Any? I, you guys okay so far? I totally agree. I, you know, I take a look at what the counties needed. I think we as a commission over the years, and past and present, have made the right moves on capital improvements, and they've been in the right areas. But I think, once we finish this next capital improvement, we're in a stage of, you know, how can we prioritize? We've talked about how this is gonna help, and the work that the committee are with, and it's gonna take some planning. And I'm excited about it, because I think this'll help with that planning. And without some strong strategic planning, I don't know how we can determine what should be next after this. But I think the data that you're gathering and putting together, and work with the committee will certainly help the commission in prioritizing improvements. I know, I've always said, you know, the courthouse needs some work. Truly does. I know, I've always said, you know, the courthouse needs some work, truly does, but exactly what in the courthouse needs work, we don't have the data to know other than observation. I think this will help us, but again, too, I'm, my desire is, we should be planning that now while we're working on the present project so we can use our planning process to determine not only what the needs are, but a key part of it is where the funding's going to come from. In other words, what's Rob going to do for us? What rabbit is he going to pull out of the hat so we pay for it?
Very good, and the other thing, I mean, we're in heat for the money tree, that's good. The other thing about that, essentially, we bring that up, you know, capital, because we have life cycles and they're engineered life cycles, capital can't be deferred too much based on what up-down, up-down year, so we've got to start planning for the future. You know, if we can get a project rest together, 10, 15 projects, those first six probably shouldn't change, and if we can't get them done because of budget, those three, four, and five projects probably should be one, two, and three, an extra, and that's just really how it has to work.
I agree. Very good, this is exciting, we appreciate the work you've done, I hope it's met your expectations.
Yes, so far.
Very good, and just stay on top of it and continue the good work with it, and we appreciate it. I do. Very good. Anything else for Mr. Logerzky? Okay, then, as we move on to our next, we'll go to Ms. Logerzky again for construction delivery method for the Lagoon Road Facility project.
Thank you, and let this be more of a conversation, it's a way I want to go with this, not necessarily, we'll leave it up to you guys, you guys are the ultimate decision-makers, but there's, different construction delivery methods out there. The typical one that every government agency uses is a design bid build. You design a project, you get the construction projects, the plans and specifications are 100% done, put it out to bid for 30 days, take a little bidder, you build it. That's how it does it. That, because of advertising and everything like that, that adds time into the schedule. The School Facilities Commission, a long time ago, started going to a construction manager at risk. There's other private industry that do this all over the world. And basically what that is, is early on in the design process, about 30, 40% done, you go out for RFPs and you solicit a construction manager at risk, and they bring in not only their qualifications but also a price. They know different stuff, and they can actually build the projects done enough, and they can actually give us what we need to do on that and what a final price will, might not necessarily be the lowest price, which is hard for some people, so, but you also get the best contractor that's due it because you get to do it on weather qualification level. Like I said, the School Facilities Commission does this all the time, that's how they do every single one of their schools, every single one. I've talked to John Daley on about this, he's been in contact with the School Facilities Commission, wanting just to figure out what their things are. I've heard good things, I've heard bad things, it all depends on that first RFP process and how you bring people in, how you do it. It does have its drawbacks, like I said, one of the things, you might not always get the right, the low price. The good thing about that is if you don't like that RFP, kind of like Eric did in the first one, you can just show them, you go back to design bid build because we're not using anything because your architectural services still going on. It gives us another option, it gives us another thing. The other thing that it does for us is, in our weather, like, based on with the CO2 injection, we're playing a weather game all the time. Right now, we're looking at a July-August start of construction for the jail road, that means we're probably going to be shovels on the ground in August or September for foundation.
You said jail, don't you mean?
No, jail, sorry, just the Lagoon Road, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Lagoon Road Facility. But the jail kind of did the same thing, and that has accelerated costs because you have concrete in the winter plant, you have hot water, you have heat, you have people working out in 16-degree weather. With this, what we're hoping to do is actually put down a utility plan sometime in May, and then in July, probably, having a foundation plan though, and accelerating that. Three months doesn't sound like a lot, but three months on a two-year project, when you only have, really have nine months of construction season, it's tough.
Good, nine months?
If you stretch that, you're going to have to wait. We all can't wait on whether or not how many floors we can fill up.
Sure, true. 10 months, 100?
I've been doing this for 35 years, and it's amazing, the different cycles that you go through. You know, I paid in December, where it's going to be 40 degrees, but I've also stopped paying in September because you can't go 40 degrees, it's the same thing. So if there's any questions, what I would like to do is the option to explore that and go out for an RFP. If you guys aren't okay with that, tell me, but that's the option, that's why I brought it up today.
Questions, commissioners?
I have a question, I guess.
Go ahead.
Danny, do you, is there anything that binds us to what we've been doing in the past, or is, you know, is it an option legally for us to explore this construction manager-at-risk position?
Well, my first answer is no, I don't think it binds us, but I'll look into it.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Commissioners, other questions? Mr. Smith?
I guess the only thing I, I would think is if we were to look at this method, we could probably find further cost efficiencies by decreasing the length and cost, being able to buy supplies in a lower amount, would that be true?
That's one of the things, the other thing is you get the contractor early on so he can actually tailor the plans to what he's good at. You know, one of the things that we're looking at for the big one out there is tip-up construction. Concrete tip-up, wind machinery did that, a lot of the schools, tip-up construction kind of went through a phase in the 70s where everybody was doing it, and then they stopped in the 90s until early 2000s. Tip-up construction is not widely used in the statewide. Roadhouse has done it before, but there's some large construction companies that do it all the time in the country. Unfortunately, is when we do the tip-up construction, no matter what, it's either getting brought out of Salt Lake or it's just brought out of Denver, that's where the tip-up manufacturer goes. You know, if we go with a, with a different kind of method, you know, a stick-built method or something like that, you look at a different contractor. The reason why we're looking at tip-up is, after talking along machinery, there are value on their walls, is phenomenal, the natural light that we've been able to brought in, and the speed of construction for that, that you can actually look at and solicit people that are good at that and to bring that on. One of the biggest construction manager-at-risk projects, if you guys remember back during the Olympics in Salt Lake, I believe, and I don't know the exact numbers, on I-15, they replaced 18 groups. They actually had an office downtown where UDOT was there, the construction person, the builder that was doing the bridges, and a designer. They were all in the same office, and they were going around. After the first two bridges, they, grounding halt, they said, we've got to come up with a different plan because we're not going to get done until after the location's done. And what they did is they actually figured out a modular bridge system. UDOT has created this, if you actually look at, they built a bridge off-site, brought the bridge and actually slid it in place, and that was all for the construction manager-at-risk. And they realized, you know, construction value because when you're not building over a highway, doing stuff like that, you realize savings. Conversely, on a building, you can tailor that to what the contractor goes wrong, and you can read, you know, everybody does something well, and when you can play to that strength, you build all the possibilities.
With, with those bridge projects in Utah, when they shut the interstates down to slide those in, it was a very minimal amount of time they were shut down.
Yeah, they usually shut down about 24 hours.
Yeah, 24 hours, and that's the only interruption they had for traffic, so it was just amazing.
And when you look at that, if they were, if they did it, and they did try to, if it's a design bid build like a typical do it, you know, engineers, there's more engineers than there are us, we think we know what we think we don't. A lot of us haven't been out in the field a lot, a lot of us don't understand new technologies and stuff like that. When you talk to the contractors and you can get to their strengths and you can have them help design it, they would have designed 15 different bridges or 18 different bridges how many they had in place. Engineers like coming up with new ways of doing stuff, they would have had 18 different bridge designs for those 18 different bridges. That's not an efficiency. So.
Other questions, commissioners?
Just so I have a kind of clear in my mind, what we're asking, being asked to do is to approve an RFP that will emphasize a risk man, or a delivery method for the.
Delivery method.
So we're basically not binding us into approving any dollars until we see the RFP, which.
Until we go through all that.
And when we see the RFP, we have the opportunity to reject it or accept it and move forward.
Yeah, and we'll go through, talking to John and Emory and Danny, just meet on that, and we'll make sure that that's approved.
Yeah, and that's, and it could be approved with consultation with the attorney.
It will be, yeah, I mean, it totally will be. The other thing also is you can bring on the construction manager-at-risk and do a two-part RFP where they can help out in the design portion of it, and then wait till the, until that 75 or 80% and give us a harder number instead of bringing them in earlier to give us a harder number so that they have more comfort with it. You know, with the Lagoon Drive Maintenance Facility, it's a pretty standard building, it's, tip-up construction is a big warehouse, it's an office there. The fire is a little bit different because of the specialty and the 24-hour nature and stuff like that, but they're not complex buildings by any means, they're pretty standard buildings.
This will be about the first time the county's ever done something like this.
It will be the first.
Kind of RFP for risk management.
True.
Okay, other questions? All right, after all the questions have been asked, I believe, and answered at this moment, commissioners, what's your pleasure here?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are we at the point to be able to make that motion, or do we have to have more consultation with the attorneys?
Either way, I guess, not speaking for Danny, but if you want to do it with that, that caveat on there, the county attorney's okay, looking into it, and if he's not, we'll just pull back to you guys in for January, but, no, we, the county attorney said that we were looking into that, and it's going to hand us into something we don't want to be up.
Right, and I think at this point, I don't see any problem going forward, and it's just a matter of something does pop up, it'll be in consultation with Gene anyhow, so, he knows that because he's an engineer.
He doesn't know everything. Can I ask your question, Commissioner Lloyd?
And the reason why I want to do this, it sounds like kind of a rush, those three weeks is critical where we can actually do a lot of stuff, and if there's three weeks and wait till January, that RFP's not going to get out until March.
Yeah.
You know, so.
We can always pull it back, you can.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the alternate project delivery method for the Lagoon Road Consolidated Facility project from design bid build to construction manager-at-risk.
Okay, so commissioners, we had a motion made by Commissioner Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schoenfield, any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Gene, look forward to it, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, let's take it. All right, next up will be our friend, Ms. Dernovich. How far along are we?
About 15 minutes.
Okay, you want to keep going, or you want to wait? Keep going? All right, as long as we have people here, let's not hold them up. All right, good morning, Ms. Dernovich, how are you?
It's nice to be here today, I won't get picked on, here's that.
Yeah, but the thing about it is, is being picked on, you know you're loved, but not being picked on, you wonder if you're loved.
Well, I do have one.
So, you know.
I don't understand.
Sorry.
Anyways, commissioners, we're here today, our bomb squad has a couple of extra, I guess I could call them, older bomb suits that were purchased, one was purchased with the Rock Springs Homeland Security Funds, the other one was purchased with the Sheriff's Homeland Security Funds. These bomb suits are, oh, let's see, I want to say they're about 10 years old. We replaced, replaced them in 2018 with EOD-10 suits. The suits are still somewhat usable, and the Cheyenne Bomb Squad had requested them. We have contacted the Homeland Security to see if that's a doable transfer, if they're okay with it because Cheyenne is eligible for DHS money. So we're here today to get Commissioner from the board to allow that transfer.
Okay, anything to add here? Okay, questions, commissioners?
It's pretty straightforward.
Commissioner Lloyd, you okay? It's a solemn look, it's a solemn look, I think. I tell the wheels are turning.
Excited?
No, it's just.
No, I, no. Keep excited.
No, nothing, okay. All right, at this point, commissioners, what's your desire?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Schoenfield.
I would like to make a motion to transfer the med, I guess, engineering EOD-9 bomb suits to Cheyenne.
Okay, commissioners, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Schoenfield, a second by Commissioner Lloyd for the transfer of the med and EOD-9 bomb suits to Cheyenne, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And if I can get, if I can get some.
You're on.
Great.
Are you going back to your office?
I am, I, I got your message, so yes, I'll be there.
Okay, I'll call you later, I'll call you here. Thank you. There we go, we'll take a second. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, Marty. Okay, our next agenda item is 2020 Annual Operating and Financial Plan between the county and, I believe, the USDA Forest Service Ash and Ash, Forest Service Ash and National Forest. Sheriff, welcome, you're up.
That's our annual contract with Forest Service. So you can control them.
So you can control them, that type of thing. Attorneys have looked at it, we're comfortable with it and everything.
Yes.
Okay, commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Smith?
So I see there's a carryover of $6,000 and then it hadn't billed for the 2019 activities?
I don't, we spent our 2019, we, I don't know, we made a carryover for the same dollar that we did.
So have we, do we get paid in arrears, or is this paid to us and then we provide the services?
It's paid to us, I believe, as you do.
As you do. All right, I just read in that it's a previous year carryover amount of $6,000. This amount has not been billed for 2019 authorized activities.
That's something I think that I don't like to do.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, Commissioner Smith? Nope. Commissioner Schoenfield, any questions?
No.
Commissioner Lloyd? You're good? I mean, you are. I've got a question for attorney. Mr. Attorney, the motion, of course, will go up to approve the agreement, and as I look at signatures, it does have Commissioner Chairman Wally Johnson's name on it. Should the motion be for him to sign it or acting chairman?
Well, I think it needs to be approved, and as a matter of course, the approval will allow the chairman to sign off on it.
The acting chairman?
Yeah.
So I can sign off being those names on it. Okay, very good, I just want to make sure, and make sure we're not stepping over any phone calls, okay. Commissioners, you've heard from the sheriff regarding the 2020 Annual Operating and Financial Plan between the county of Sweetwater and the USDA Forest Service Ash and National Forest for $6,000 a year, is that correct? Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'd so move.
So moved by Commissioner Lloyd, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schoenfield, discussion? Would you like to amend that, that the chairman signs?
Yeah, we'd like to amend that to the chairman's sign.
Okay, and you're for the second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so, back to commissioners, any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff. I think you're still up, maybe. There you go, that's your little bobber, it's on the wrong side, it's on the wrong side.
Just got to keep going, tell us.
Should I put today's name? Okay, we'll go to Tab L, and it's a request to restock vacant positions, more than one in the detention center. We have Sheriff here and Mr. McLean, and introduce your guest, Ms. Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, committee commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to address this issue. I've asked Ashley Smith, who's most of you knows, a relatively new hire in the department, I've wanted opportunity for her to meet all of you in this setting, and so she's going to address the changes with Sheriff, she does most of the work on these anyway, so she's a lot more charming than I am, second. And third, I think that one of the goals is to make sure regardless who's here, who's available, if there's continuity of operations, and so I think it's important that we get everybody sort of involved in the process, so she's going to address the issues with the detention officers.
Very good. Well, welcome, Ashley, glad to meet you, I hope your things are well in the HR department, and a number of your emails have come out with many good announcements, we appreciate them very much, so with that.
Put your United Way donation.
We got that.
All right.
Anyhow, you're up, Ms. Ashley.
So, all right, we're coming with a request to restock positions within the detention center, and many of these are just because we have transferred two people into the patrol division, and so the first request is for a detention officer position, we, in January, we're going to be moving this person, the ones with the patrol side, and so we're moving to, we're trying to restock this open position within the detention officer to keep things up as far and sure as safety happens. And then you'll notice there's a dollar difference for the original person and then the, of course, that we're trying to restock, we, we're budgeting this. this amount so that the new person can come in with family coverage. You'll see there's about a $17,000 increase in that. And we're just because the original person had single coverage for health insurance. And we're just making sure that this is covered for the second person to come in.
Okay. Very good. Well, on the first position, commissioners, any questions? No change other than the health insurance budget's okay and everything like that? Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the request to restaff the vacant position in the detention center and authorize chairman to sign. So moved. So moved by Commissioner Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Discussion. With no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You're still up, Ms. Smith.
So, the second position to restaff, it will be another detention officer position. I'm fearful that you'll see in the third request, we're moving us a detention sergeant into the patrol side as a sergeant. So, we're trying to move up from within and then restaff that detention officer level. And so, this position will be another detention officer. And there will be a decrease in dollar amount because that person will be starting off at a grade 15 instead of an 18.
Wonderful. It's good to be saving money. All right, questions, commissioners? No questions. With that in mind, I'll entertain a motion that we, to, to request, no, sorry, to restaff the vacant position, the detention officer, and the chairman to sign.
Special.
So moved by Commissioner Shanefield. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Questions? We'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Ms. Ashley, number three?
As I mentioned, request number two, we're going to be moving a detention sergeant into the patrol side. So, this will be just to replace that sergeant position within the detention center.
Very good. Question?
There should be no difference in the.
No difference. I see that.
Sorry.
Very good. Good job. Commissioners, any questions? Entertain a motion to approve the request to restaff vacant position in detention, for the detention sergeant position. Is that correct? And authorize chairman to sign.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ms. Smith?
Request number four comes as a food service worker. We've been doing some moving around in the food service, or the kitchen in the detention center. And so, we are moving up from within, moving to within, and making somebody a food service worker number three. And this is to restack her original position. And so, the dollar not only different, but she'll be starting as an entry level food service worker instead of the higher grades.
Okay. Questions on this position? No questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve the request to restaff the vacant position, food service worker. So, an authorized chairman to sign. Her so moved by Mr. Smith. Commissioner Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Discussion, yes.
I just make a brief comment. A few, about two meetings ago, three meetings ago, I think we, Sheriff had requested that the board have approved a recreation of the sergeant position in the detective group. And there was a small increase in cost as a result of that. Part of the savings is coming at this time. In other words, we historically had like almost a department head level position within the kitchen for a variety of reasons. The sheriff has, you know, that's why there's been a lot of problems with that model. And so, the management of that group is coming for whoever's responsible for the detention center. Will provide all of the direct management responsibilities. This position's really like a lead worker, kind of the side work and do some training within the staff. So, the savings is the, as I, I think I alluded to at that meeting, this is where some of that savings is coming from.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
To make purchase of something for the sheriff's.
All right, very good. Did we call for the question on that one? Did we approve it?
Yes.
Do we have a motion? Didn't we say, I'll have a second? But did we have a question? Nope. So, I'll call for the question to approve and authorize chairman to sign. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Very good. Job well done. Thank you.
Hey, Chairman, can we just ask?
Sure.
Sheriff, first, how's the turnover looking in our patrol and our detention center? I know this is a discussion we've had for a point of time.
Overall, the organization appears to be well now. When I took over, we're right at about five or six total. We're getting there. We just need to get up over that home.
Well, that's.
We're getting there slowly. I want to be full staff by the first, a year. That's not going to happen. But we are drawing people. From other parts, a bit much for us. So, we just hired somebody on patrol. It's from Florida. And what's happened over the last year. So, we actually have more applicants for the detention. We have people, which I've never seen.
Yeah, I tried many options.
Yeah.
Well, I think as Mr. McLean finishes the survey, that should be beneficial, that information helping.
We could, we can, hopefully, hear the strength of that.
And also, just to add to that, one of the things, the first meeting in January, I think we should have everything finalized. One of the things we've been doing, because the reality is, in order to fill these positions, the recruitment is going to have to be national. They're just, we used to fill like 80% of the patrol positions for folks coming out of the military. It's just not doable anymore. And so, the, so one of the things that we've been doing since Ashley came on board is reviewing an applicant tracking system that helps automate and improve the recruitment front end. It allows us to brand it. It allows us to be much more fluid in communicating between all the openings and people that are different, who have background checked in. And they're really nice systems. They're not very expensive. And so, we'll be coming back in January to request approval for the system. Here in the next few weeks, we'll be going through kind of the top two or three systems with John and his staff. But that's an area that we've just got to be better. When we're just able to recruit here, it's not such a big deal. But when we start doing this nationally, we need better tools to be able to reach those folks. And that's one of them that we're going to try to use.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Did I take care of you, Ms. Sheriff?
Yeah, I am going to stay for the executive.
Yeah. All right, so we'll have that. Very good.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Ashley?
No.
Well, thank you. You did a great job. We're glad to have you with us. All right, our next agenda item will be to request approval of the VSP renewal agreement. Gary, Mr. McLean, you're still up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. January's always a busy time for health insurance renewal. This is one more piece. This is renewal of our agreement with VSP, Vision Services Program. They provide the vision insurance component of our health insurance program. There's really no changes to the program, either price or terms of the agreement. We're just renewing it. And so, I'm requesting the board to approve the project as submitted and authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay. You've had a chance to look at all commissioners. Do you have any question? All right, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the VSP renewal agreement and authorize chairman to sign.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any questions? Discussion?
Good job. You drive a hard bargain to keep that at the same level. That's rough in this.
If we could just do that in the high dollar.
Yeah, there you go.
We're playing some more big tricks.
There you go.
We'll take what we.
No, it's, they do a good job. We appreciate it. It's good coverage. County takes care of its people in a lot of good ways. So, we have a motion. I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So, it looks like we have that one behind us, Gary. Our next agenda item is also, I believe, with Mr. McLean, is to approve, is request approval of the VSO memorandum of understanding between Sweetwater County and the state of Wyoming. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. I'm going to provide a little bit of context to this, that we're talking about the agreement specifically. A number of years ago, the state of Wyoming virtually had no veteran services officers in the state of Wyoming. They had one in Cheyenne. And as a consequence, there were a number of entities from the American Legion, DAV, other service organizations, and other citizens trying to provide services to assist veterans in navigating the morass of bureaucracy that's second only to the IRS in, to, to receive their state and federal benefits under law. There were a number of problems that resulted from that. In Sweetwater County, I ended up going basically to Sublet Lincoln County and pitching this idea of developing our own program, which we have done successfully since that day. The state has really since then kind of followed the model in developing a statewide veteran services program, following our lead into Vetrespect as the database, case management software that we had three years before they did for annual claims. We're now to a point where the state has a viable program and they're essentially funding in all of the other counties in the state of Wyoming except for these three. They had been sending a person to UNA County from Riverton. As you might imagine, in the winter, that's not a very good recipe for success. And so, they approached and asked, could we send somebody to meet the veterans in UNA County? Nancy, who is the veteran services officer in Lincoln County, has time to do that, which is one day a week, and, and is willing to do that. And so, I said to them, you know, yeah, we could, we have the time and the people to do that, but we can't ask those counties to keep funding some of your funding somewhere else. So, this MOU is really an attempt to delineate the responsibilities that we will undertake in providing services on behalf of the state in UNA County with our people reimbursing them for the mileage and hourly rate for them to provide that service on that schedule. If Nancy, for example, who's in Lincoln County, were to go, then we would reduce Lincoln County's portion that they pay us back. And we'll incorporate this into the new MOU this, this fall, as we've been discussing, to clarify that. Part of the reason that I think this is an important issue for us is, this is minor. Nancy went last Thursday to set up the office over there. So, we're ready to go under any circumstance. But the bigger issue is, is that, again, we have a number of programs from veteran services to things we did in the health department, to juvenile probation, that we do. And then the state takes that money and real allocates it to other counties around the state. And so, one of the things that I think we are hoping out of this is to create a model where the state says, yes, that's the right way to do it. Boots on the ground, people in the community that know the veterans in the community. We're all partners in this. And then reimburse or offset part of the costs. And so, I'm hoping that while we're only addressing one issue right now, I'm hoping that we can expand this into a larger discussion with the state where they help participate in some of the costs for Sublet, Sweetwater, and Lincoln County for the cost of the program now. As I told Tim Shepherd, the current director, the budget's around $229,000 right now. I said, I would challenge you to provide services over that coverage area for $229,000. The reason we're able to do that, because the counties are all partnering in doing this. They're not having to go rent buildings and get separate IT connections and incur those costs. Instead, the money's going to training people and providing services. So, I think, I still believe strongly in that model. And I'm hoping this is sort of a stepping stone to a larger discussion with the state of Wyoming regarding these three counties. Be that as it may, the one thing that he has to recognize, the person we're sending over to UNA County is certified with the American Legion, with the VFW, with the DAV, and with the National Association of County Veteran Services Officers, not to mention seven, eight years of experience. To duplicate that on there, and you cannot go hire somebody with those qualifications, it would take them three, four years to obtain those certifications and that learning. So, not only are they getting a need met, they're getting a met with arguably one of the, if not the most qualified person in the state of Wyoming and other parts. So, they're very happy if we can do that. And, and just in the initial meeting, she picked up nine claims just in being there to set up the office without even advertising or delivering the service. So, obviously, the needs are.
Very good. Questions, commissioners? Mr. Lloyd?
No questions.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith.
Shanefield? How long has Tim Shepherd been with you?
Just since June.
Since June, okay.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah, the previous director has always been very complimentary for the county's model to, when he's talked to other, to all the counties at the WCC in the past, and even to the extent that they are to contact you. Because your name's attached with this model for all the right reasons. Because it's a model you believe in. So, I want you to know that. So, it was talked about in the past. I hope it is continued to talk about and that type of thing. The other aspect about it is, this model, which regionalizes services basically, is showing that it does save money, you know, by regionalizing services. So, I think it's also a good point to make that when we have opportunities out there to hopefully regionalize services in the community, in the county, with the cities or whatever, we take the time to look at them because there is money to be saved, you know. Conversations, you know, regionalizing, I don't think you can turn away from any of it. But it's a good model. It's one we've got to continue to look at, continue to do. I think you're involved in some of that right now.
Yep.
And that, so we'll just continue to do it. And it looks good. So, that's my only comments. So, any other comments from you commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I can just add on to that. This is sort of a, a second phase of something that we did take six years to do to begin with with the Department of Health. So, if you recall, prior to the current arrangement with the Department of Health, they had a state supervisor supervising county employees. And we were basically working for the state, providing all the funding. Today, although it took us quite a few years of going at this, today, we agreed through a similar MOU with the state of Wyoming to provide the public health requirements required of the state. In exchange for, we provide the services with our employees through the Department of Health, and they reimburse us. So, one of the things to keep in mind, this is a model that's catching on. We've done it here. I'd like to see them replicate here. But I think it's a real model for delivering services in a much more economical way than coming in, buying another building, setting up, trying to get IT support out here, especially in counties where we already have that. As you know, we struggled with this issue with the courts system where the state's setting up parts and trying to get people out here to support it. When the clear thing is, it's just contract with it and share some of the costs, and we'll, we'll support them. And we already have the resources. Build the resources in the counties, not try to duplicate things by sending them out there. So, I'm hoping that we can build on a couple successes that we have now in this regard.
Very good. I agree.
Thank you. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion from Commissioner to approve, for, for approval of the VSO memorandum of understanding between Sweetwater County and the state of Wyoming and authorize the chairman to sign.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Discussion, commissioners?
No.
No discussion. So, with that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I think we're a little bit ahead of schedule. Gary, don't leave. Please. Bonnie, was Amber going to be here for the?
She's planning on being here. I just got a call from her about 15 minutes ago. There's a vehicle on fire right outside of Rock Springs. And she's been stuck on the interstate at a standstill for almost an hour now. So, she's just outside of Rock Springs. She said that she'd be happy to present it over the phone in her car if you would like her to. Or I said another option was for you to possibly move forward and agree with this later after the executive session and the others.
Yeah.
But she is on her way and she is just outside of Rock Springs. She doesn't know when she's going to start moving again.
All right. Let's, if it's okay with my fellow commissioners, let's hold with Amber and you, and let's move to the other. move to the other for Gary with the wage study, huh?
Can we take a break?
If it'll, the answer to that is yes. The answer, if we can get Gary done and get him out of here, and then we will take a break, and then we will go into executive session, come out of the executive session, then deal with Amber and the audit.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. Now, if she's not here at that time, we may have to call her. Okay?
I will.
Unless she wants you to present it.
No.
Okay. You know, whatever the option is after that.
I am not prepared to present.
Okay, very good. I didn't know. I was going to leave it open to you, though.
I was prepared just to sit next to her and look for you.
All right. So with that, if you're okay, unless you need to break right now.
No, I'm good.
All right. So let's move into the other, and under that is basically to ratify the, oh my God, it wrote down here, Gary. So you ratify a contract with Conde and Associates Incorporated for the pay study agreement? All right, so here's, I'll pass it down if anybody would like to look at it. Questions for Gary while we're looking at it? I don't, if there's anything specific?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just hit that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
It's basically a service agreement that agrees to do the survey, the positions at the price that we discussed. The board had essentially taken action to approve this. This is just the agreement with the company that creates the binding service agreement for both parties, and that's really, that's really, it's just a formality that's going to take the process. They submitted that, and unfortunately missed the timeframe for the normal thing, but it's important enough and it's a very straightforward.
There's no reason to put us three more weeks behind.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Questions?
Gary, do they have a timeframe around when they're going to be able to complete the study?
They guarantee that it'll be done by March, it's in, which is in there by March.
Okay.
They will be done by March.
Okay.
And, go ahead. Any other questions, Commissioners?
None for me, thanks.
I just want to say I'm glad to see this moving to fruition. This has been long overdue in my opinion. So I think it's important to have that done, and I'm glad to see a March date, and I'll hold that date, so.
Well, and that would be my question, is March date, they're due to give it to Gary. How much time will you need to process it to, so we can have a report?
Shouldn't be anything. We should have the report hopefully before then. I mean, they're just, we're going to do as much work. In fact, we're doing that right now. We're doing stuff like preparing the contact information file then, and we're just going to send them a spreadsheet so they don't have to do that stuff. So we're going to try to do as much as we can. We've got Ashley working on some of that, Brenda working on some of it, and I've worked on some of it. So my intent is, is that when it comes back, we should be able to present as soon as we have it.
Okay, very good.
Because it'll be. Shouldn't be any significant lag time. There's some decisions the board has to make relative to the date. Yeah, but we should be able to do that.
Yeah, and those decisions are going to be budgetary decisions. Tried to directly the budget, and I, at this point in time, don't know where we'll be in that process, but even at that point in time, should still hopefully give us enough time to decide how to embed it and that type of thing.
Right.
So, any other questions, fellow Commissioners? With that in mind, I'll entertain a motion that we ratify the contract with Conde and Associates Incorporated for the wage study.
So moved.
So.
I'll have the chairman to sign.
And I'll have the chairman, thank you, by Commissioner Smith. There's a motion, second. Second by Commissioner Lloyd. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I'm sorry I left out discussion, but we already, we've edited enough. So with that in mind, I will ask that we have a motion to go into executive session, but let's have a 10-minute break. Is that long enough?
That would be perfect.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd.
I know we talked about going into executive session, but we didn't specify why, so I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for possible legal as well as real estate.
I'd make that motion.
Motion been made by Commissioner Smith. Is her second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. All was in favor. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, same sign. Motion passes. Executive session.
The executive session is over and we're back in regular session. I'd like to note that no action will be taken as we did have real estate and possible legal concerns, so we'll move forward to our final agenda item on the fiscal year 2019 audit report. Do we know if Amber's here?
She is here.
She is here, very good, so good timing.
Mr. Chairman, I've got some stuff that's going on right now.
Okay. Things happening. We can do the audit report without you.
Would you? I would appreciate that, I'm gonna have to...
No. Too bad. Sorry Danny.
No problem.
It's Christmas time, isn't it? It's Christmas time. The fiscal report will be here shortly, she is here in the building along with Bonnie Berry, so...
How long is she in the building?
I'm listening probably...
Rumor has it.
Huh?
Rumor has it.
Rumor has it. Glad you're here.
Thanks for having me.
You're welcome, thank you.
Sorry for the little scheduling debacle.
Oh, you couldn't control that one. We're just glad you're safe and you're here.
Yeah, it was like a 45 minutes on the interstate, I mean, more than just traffic. Can I pass you that to you guys first?
Sure, please. And then when you're finished we'll have introductions.
Okay.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do I need one? I already printed one out.
Okay.
I don't feel like talking.
Do you need one, Rob?
I would like one at some point, yes.
Okay, very good.
It's a bit more exciting that way, right?
Yeah.
I guess she did a heart pump. Oh, actually I do have a heart pump. Ooh, it's cold. Was it in your trunk?
It was in my car.
Your car was cold.
Okay, Ms. Bonnie, we're ready to go, would you introduce our guest, please?
Okay, this is Amber News from our auditing firm, M&amp;I, and she will be presenting the audit, and we are our new commissioners, long you know.
Welcome.
He's acting today.
Merry Christmas.
And Lauren Schoenfeld is our new commissioner, and Jeffrey Smith. Hi.
Very good. Okay, we're ready, we're all ears?
Cindy, have you got somebody yet?
No, I haven't.
Hi.
Cindy Lane, this is Amber.
Hi, Amber.
Well, thanks for having me. This morning I said my name's Amber and I'm a partner at M&amp;P and we're the chief responsible for the external audit of Sioux County. I feel like I've been doing this presentation for quite a few years and it's kind of neat to see a lot of new faces, and so I feel like my presentation's gonna be all new. So what I normally do is I go through the deliverables, and you have the bound copy and then my letter, I go through each of those and I try and do it in about 10 to 20 minutes, but as I go through and touch on my highlights, please go through it and I can ask you questions, because we can have to answer those as we go, or if they're unsigned too. So overall, we come in and do the audit starting at the end of October, and we also do some work with the component units during the summertime thing, and those processes went very smoothly again this year, and Bonnie's a great help in coordinating everything and getting all the information to us, answering all the questions that we have and kind of keeping our team moving, so thanks to Bonnie and all the folks who helped us through the audit process, I was very pleased with how it went. As part of that, we issued to you four deliverables really, three letters are included in the bound report, and the fourth is the statement letter in front of you, so I'll touch on all four of those different letters as I move along, and then the meat of that report is the financial statements and the footnotes that are drafted by Bonnie that we audit during our process. So just to jump right in, I'm gonna start on the bound document. The first of the four letters that we deliver to you as a board is on pages one through three, this is our audit opinion. So this is what provides our opinion on the financial statements that are in this bound document, and what we concluded on this letter is that it's called an unmodified opinion, that's another way of saying it's a clean report, that's exactly what you want to see as a commission. I do typically highlight on the middle of page one, we make reference to the hospital on that page, because as you may know, the hospital is audited by other auditors, so we basically communicate with them, get a copy of their audit report, fold it into this report, and rely completely upon them for those numbers, which are significant in here, so we're making reference there. And the actual opinion itself is on the top of page two, saying we believe the financials are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Then I'll move through the meat next of the report, which is what Bonnie drafts for us, and the other three deliverables too I'll cover at the end. And so moving along through the report, pages four through eleven is the narrative discussion and analysis, this is where you'll find some trend information, some operational highlights, just some description of the year compared to the prior year, so I encourage you to read through that when you have time. And if you jump to page 12, this is where the financial statements start, so there's basically two different sets of financial statements in this document, one's on the full accrual basis and another one's on the modified accrual basis, so I'll touch on each of them. Pages 12, 13, and 14 are the full accrual statements covering the whole county, including component units at the hospital, and these are really a longer-term perspective, so if you want to see like longer-term assets and liabilities, this is the place that you will look, it includes the capital assets, infrastructure of the county, as well as the longer-term debt. And so basically, just a couple highlights on page 12, total assets of the main county itself excluding the component units are about 172 million. Page 13 is the liabilities and net position, which is another word for equity. You can see a couple of significant liabilities on that page, kind of in the middle, and I usually touch on these, there's the total OKEB obligation, which is the first row in your noncurrent liabilities, about 4.7 million, and then the net pension liability of about 23.9 million. I'll talk about those a little bit as we move through the footnotes, but those are kind of some significant important liabilities that are very large estimates on the financials that are important to highlight to you, so I'll get to more detail on those in a minute. And then the net position section, there's about 21.6 million of net position that's not externally restricted for other reasons within the county or tied up already in infrastructure or capital assets, so that's a number there. The income statement equivalent on this full accrual basis of accounting is what you see on page 14, this is a neat statement to read, so you kind of read it left to right, top to bottom, and so the bottom right-hand side shows you the change in net position, the main county itself had a decrease of about 3.6 million, the component units excluding the hospital dropped about 1.9 million. Expenses did go up compared to the year before, and a lot of the revenues were actually pretty consistent, property tax and sales tax revenue were pretty consistent from the year before. Okay, moving forward, page 15 starts that second set of financials, which are called modified accrual basis, and this is a shorter-term perspective and also at fund level, so if you want to see what's happening, like for example, just within the general fund itself, this is where you'll look, you're not gonna see the longer-term assets and liabilities in this set of financials, but it kind of gives you shorter focus, no component units included on here. So general fund, you can see, has a bottom line fund balance, which is equity of about 43.5 million, that whole fund balance section basically outlines what's already spoken for in terms of that part of equity. Within the county, restricted lines are externally restricted by third parties. The committed section, there's quite a significant amount of commitments of that equity, which are formal actions you've taken as a commission to set aside that money to only be used for a certain purpose, and unless you make another formal action, that money has to be spent on that purpose, so for example, capital replacements of 8.35 million. The bottom row, before the subtotals of unassigned, that's the part of money that's really not spoken for at all in any other way for those funds, and so then...
Just a minute Amber, where are you at now?
The bottom of page 15.
Okay. Oh, unassigned?
Unassigned, exactly.
Okay, very good.
So there's 25.1 million of unassigned equity basically in the general fund. If you hop to page 17, this is the income statement equivalent, so you can see the revenues and expenditures by fund there. The total governmental fund expenditures did drop about 15% from the year before, this year they were about 41.7 million, that was mostly due to a drop in capital outlay expenditures. Overall, at the fund level, the equity or fund balance went up about 3.2 million. So there's reconciliations between those two sets of financials, and if you keep moving forward, page 19 through 21 provides the information specifically on the health insurance plan, that's for the employees, this is referred to as the internal service insurance fund. You'll see on page 19 unrestricted net position of just over 3 million, that's still a pretty healthy reserve, that represents about 35% of the annual expenditures of claims and other expenses in that fund, which is about 4.2 months' worth of reserves sitting there for that health insurance plan. And page 20, you'll see the income statement, the equity balance did drop about 1.1 million this year, which is the first time this fund's seen a decrease in a while of that significance, yeah, so it kind of ate away at the equity reserve, but you're sitting still at about four months there. Page 22 shows the fiduciary money, which is the funds used on behalf of others, namely property tax funds, collective, and the source fund were there. And then if you'd like more detailed information on the component units, well, at least the six governmental-type component units, so all of them excluding the hospital, that starts on page 23 and proceeds through to the footnotes, and those statements just for your information are all on the full accrual basis, so more like what you'd see in a for-profit entity there. Then diving into the footnote, this starts on page 27, page 27 to 33 is the accounting policies the county uses, which nothing significant change there, so I didn't have anything up to you. Footnote two, starting on page 33, talks about the passion investment portfolio of the county, the primary government, or the county itself, holds about 62 million of passion investments, most of those investments are all in government agency bonds, which is consistent with years past. Page 34 shows you that they all have the highest possible credit rating of AAA, so they're safe, and we also disclose on page 34 that we test those passion investments for proper collateralization, and there were no issues with any...
this report and rely completely upon them for those numbers, which are significant in here. So we're making reference there. And the actual opinion itself is on top of page two, saying we believe the financials are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Then I'll move through the meat next of the report, which is what Bonnie drafts for us. And the other three deliverables too, I'll cover at the end. And so moving along through the report, pages four through 11 is the narrative discussion and analysis. This is where you'll find some trend information, some operational highlights, just some description of the year compared to the prior year. So I encourage you to read through that when you have time. And if you jump to page 12, this is where the financial statements start. So there's basically two different sets of financial statements in this document. One's on the full accrual basis and another one's on the modified accrual basis. So I'll touch on each of them. Pages 12, 13, and 14 are the full accrual statements covering the whole county, including component units and the hospital. And these are really a longer-term perspective, so if you want to see like longer-term assets and liabilities, this is the place that you would look. It includes the capital assets, infrastructure of the county, as well as the longer-term debt. And so basically, just a couple highlights on page 12. Total assets of the main county itself, excluding the component units, are about $172 million. Page 13 is the liabilities and the net position, which is another word for equity. You can see a couple of significant liabilities on that page, kind of in the middle. And I usually touch on these. There's the total OKEV obligation, which is the first row in their noncurrent liabilities, is about $4.7 million. And then the net pension liability of about $23.9 million. I'll talk about those a little bit as we move through the footnotes, but those are kind of some significant important liabilities that are very large estimates on the financials that are important to highlight to you. So I'll get to more detail on those in a minute. And then the net position section. There's about $21.6 million of net position that's not externally restricted for other reasons within the county or tied up already in infrastructure or capital assets. So that's the number there. The income statement equivalent on this full accrual basis of accounting is what you see on page 14. This is a neat statement to read because you kind of read it left to right, top to bottom. And so the bottom right-hand side shows you the change in net position. The main county itself had a decrease of about $3.6 million. Component units excluding the hospital dropped about $1.9 million. Expenses did go up compared to the year before and a lot of the revenues were actually pretty consistent. Property tax and sales tax revenue were pretty consistent from the year before. Okay, moving forward, page 15 starts that second set of financials, which are called modified accrual basis. And this is a shorter-term perspective and also at fund level. So if you want to see what's happening, like for example, just looking at the general fund itself, this is where you would look. You're not gonna see the longer-term assets and liabilities in this set of financials, but it kind of gives you shorter focus, no component units included on here. So general fund, you can see, has a bottom line fund balance, which is equity of about $43.5 million. That whole fund balance section basically outlines what's already spoken for in terms of that pot of equity. Within the county, restricted lines are externally restricted by third parties. The committed section, there's quite a significant amount of commitments of that equity, which are formal actions you've taken as a commission to set aside that money to only be used for a certain purpose. And unless you make another formal action, that money has to be spent on that purpose. So for example, capital replacements of $8.35 million. The bottom row before the subtotals of unassigned, that's the pot of money that's really not spoken for at all in any other way for those funds.
Just a minute, Amber. Where are you at now?
The bottom of page 15.
Okay. Oh, unassigned?
Unassigned.
Okay, very good.
So there's $25.1 million of unassigned equity basically in the general fund. If you hop to page 17, this is the income statement equivalent. So you can see the revenues and expenditures by fund there. The total governmental fund expenditures did drop about 15% from the year before. This year they were about $41.7 million. That was mostly due to a drop in capital outlay expenditures. Overall, at the fund level, the equity or fund balance went up about $3.2 million. So there's reconciliations between those two sets of financials. And if you keep moving forward, page 19 through 21 provides the information specifically on the health insurance plan. That's for the employees. This is referred to as the internal service insurance fund. You'll see on page 19 unrestricted net position of just over $3 million. That's still a pretty healthy reserve. That represents about 35% of the annual expenditures of claims and other expenses in that fund, which is about 4.2 months' worth of reserves sitting there for that health insurance plan. And page 20, you'll see the income statement. The equity balance did drop about $1.1 million this year, which is the first time this fund's seen a decrease in a while of that significance. Yeah, so it kind of ate away at the equity reserve, but you're sitting still at about four months there. Page 22 shows the fiduciary money, which is the funds usually one we have with others, mainly property tax funds, collective, and the source fund. We're there. And then if you'd like more detailed information on the component units, well, at least the six governmental-type component units, so all including the hospital, that starts on page 23 and proceeds through to the footnotes. And those statements, just for your information, are all on the full accrual basis, so are more like what you'd see in a for-profit entity there. Then diving into the footnote, we'll start on page 27. Page 27 to 33 is the accounting policies the county uses, which nothing significant change there, so I didn't mean to bring anything up to you. Footnote two, starting on page 33, talks about the cash and investment portfolio of the county. The primary government or the county itself holds about $62 million of cash and investments. Most of those investments are all in government agency bonds, which is consistent with years past. Page 34 shows you that they all have the highest possible credit rating of AAA, so they're safe. And we also disclose on page 34 that we test those cash and investments for proper collateralization. And there were no issues with any of the cash being under-collateralized. And page 35 shows you the maturity of that investment portfolio, most of it sitting between one to five or five to 10 years in maturity. If you jump to page 36, note four, I usually point out another significant estimate that's in the financials, which is the allowance for doubtful accounts at Southwest Counseling that represents, you can see there in that table near the bottom of page 36, it's about $1.7 million and that's about 70% of their receivables there. And so that 70% is consistent with years past, but that's a large estimate that we take a special look at during the audit and found that to be reasonable. Footnote six starts on page 37.
No overdue library book fees?
We're not worried about overdue library book fees?
Not worried about what?
The overdue library book fees? That'd be huge, isn't it? There's nothing there.
We don't look too much at that, no.
Okay, all right.
We can actually.
Danny, please, Mr. Chairman.
A lot of good that's gonna do us.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so if you hop to page 39, this is the, one of those really, well, it's actually the biggest liability on the balance sheet from that first statement I was talking to you guys about. And it's referred to as the net pension liability. And what it is, is it's the county's share of the underfunded status of the retirement system. So as you know, county employees participate in either the public employee plan or the law enforcement plan. And both of those plans are underfunded and that, the amount of that underfunding is calculated by an actuary that when the retirement system hires, then that actuary also proceeds to divvy up that total underfunded liability between all the participants across the state. And so the county has a share of that, as do all the component units. And that's what this table on the bottom of page 39 is showing you. So the county's share of the underfunded status of law enforcement plan is $6.7 million, whereas the public employee plan liability is $17.2. These liabilities were not significant in the prior year and a lot of that, I believe, is due to the declining, the decline in funded status of those plans. They were about 76% funded for the public employee plan last year, was about this year for 69% funded. So that funded status dropped about 7%. The drop in the funded status on the law enforcement plan was even more significant. I think it went from like 88% down to like 71%, something like that. So because it wasn't as well-funded, that amounts to a bigger liability, which you have to put on your balance sheet every year. And it's quite volatile. If you go to page 43, the very bottom table on page 43 basically shows you how the liability would change if the actuaries adjusted the discount rate assumption by 1%. So right now, the actuaries assume a 7% discount rate, but if that was to go up or down by a percent, you could see the dramatic effect it would have on the liability. So that's where the significant estimate comes into play there. This only had to start being recorded on the county's financials probably like two or five years ago, time flies, I can't remember the exact year, but this was a big deal and continues to be a very large amount that you should be aware of. It gets booked and adjusted annually as part of the audit process. Some of the other footnotes talk about capital assets, liabilities for concentrated expenses, kind of some consistent things. If you hop to page 56, that's where the other big liability is, the other post-employment benefit pensions other than pension plan. And that's where retirees of the county are able to stay on the health insurance plan as long as they pay their own premiums, less potentially if some subsidies like they qualify for those. So this is about $4.7 million liability and the county hires an actuary to calculate that. That's been pretty consistent with prior years. If you hop to page 60, this presents the budget schedules for the general fund and the SC growth fund. And key point on these pages is the county did not overextend any of its budgetary categories. If they had, that would be a compliance binding by us, but there was compliance there at the legal level of budgetary authority. And if you're curious in looking at a lot more detail on this pension plan, the law enforcement and public employees, starting on page 64 and proceeding for like another seven pages, there's a lot of detail and time analysis on each of the component units as well as the county in terms of what those liabilities have amounted to each year, what their share of the retirement system pot is on each of those, and what the funded status is. So you can see there on page 64, this is the law enforcement plan, as I was mentioning in 2018, far right column, 88% funded, 2019 it dropped to 71%. So that's where I'll come from. If you jump to page 78, the last thing I cover before our final three letters is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, if you refer to that as the CTA. So you can see on page 80, from the very bottom, the county spent about $5.4 million of federal dollars during fiscal year 19. And so as part of our audit, we do special procedures based on the federal dollars and we have to get coverage of 20% of those as the county is considered a low-risk oddity. And to qualify as a low-risk oddity, the county couldn't have had any material findings in the last two years. And since it didn't, you have to get 20% coverage as opposed to 40% if it was high risk. So in order to get that 20%, then we audited the PILT program as well as CSBD and an opioid grant through Southwest Counseling Services. And that amounted to far more than 20% coverage. And one of the remaining three letters talks about our results on those procedures. So jumping into those final three letters, pages 82 and 83 is our second letter. And this is our letter under government auditing standards. So what government auditing standard says that we have to take a special look at internal controls over financial reporting in the county as well as compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and grant requirements, and report to you any items we find of significance case-ly. So within the compliance realm, page 83 tells you we did not find any instances of noncompliance that we consider to be material that we would need to report to you. Page 82 is the internal control area. And if we identified a deficiency in internal controls over financial reporting that we consider to be either significant or material, we have to put that in writing to you within this report. And what this letter is telling you is that we did identify one deficiency, which we outline on page 87, in regards to internal controls of the financial reporting. And that was in relation to calculating and determining the major funds of the county. So under, and this is really report preparation and presentation items, so as part of drafting and presenting these financial statements, major funds are considered to have over 10% of the assets or liabilities or revenue or expenses. There's a few more details involved, but just kind of high level. Those calculations are what drive the major funds. As we came into finish looking at the financials, we identified one of the funds that hadn't been treated as major and the draft made a change. So we had the, it was the SC growth fund, the state county growth fund. It actually, its assets went over that 10% threshold, which is unusual this year, and so it had to be treated as major. So we had to pull it out, reclass it as major, do a few little extra audit procedures on it, and then everything was in good shape. So that's what that deficiency relates to. There's a corrective action plan in here in exhibit one provided by Bonnie, which basically states she'll go ahead and make sure that calculation is done home this year. And I think it's an easy fix to anticipate there being any issues going forward. And I also, from my discussions with Bonnie, don't anticipate the SC growth fund continuing to be major. It'll probably fold back into a non-major fund next year. But so it's kind of spooky that it hopped over the limits this year, but it did.
Do you know why that is? Why did it?
It's Jean's not spending money out of it back then.
Doggone Jean.
Money in it.
Okay, so it just improved.
It has a higher cash balance in it this year than it has ever had.
Kind of snuck up.
So the assets were, if they, if that time comes, we'd make as much as possible.
It's Jean's fault again, everything.
I told him I was gonna blame him.
There she is. Candy.
I'm not spending money. I think that's a good problem to have, maybe.
Okay.
And so the third of our four letters to you is on pages 84 and 85. And this letter relates specifically to the federal dollars, the amount to the core. So as testing the PILT, CSBD, and opioid grants, we do report opinions to you on the county's compliance with the director material, compliance with parameters of those three programs. And you'll see on page 84 that that was a clean opinion and unmodified opinion there. We didn't identify any items we needed to report to you. And page 85, we do also look specifically at the internal controls over those federal dollars. And again, you'll have to report to you any deficiencies in those internal controls considered to be significant or material, and we identified none. So clean results there. So that covers the bound document. Our fourth letter to you is that separate staple letter, and we refer to that as the audit committee letter. This letter includes identity required to communicate to and your professional standards as auditors. And so just to touch on a few highlights in this letter, from the bottom of page one, the county did not adopt any significant accounting policies, so really apples-to-apples comparison year-on-year. Nor did we identify any significant or unusual transactions that we have to report to you here. The second page of this letter really covers all of the estimates that we consider to be significant in the financials. Obviously, being an estimate, it's going to be more prone to bias or subjectivity, so we can get extra close look at those significant estimates during our audit. So there's four listed there. And we kind of touched on the first three, the first one being the Southwest Counseling receivable allowance. The second one being the other post-employment benefit plan liability. The third being the widely retirement system liabilities. And then the last one I haven't mentioned yet was specifically the incurred but unreported claims on the self-insured health insurance plan, which the county hires UnitedHealth Care Company to help calculate that estimate. Those are all consistent with years past. And then the final third page of this letter basically disposes, we have no disciplinary management, no consultations we're aware of, that management has other accountants, no significant issues, and certainly no significant difficulties encountered in the audit. So just to kind of reiterate from where I started, the audit process was very smooth. Happy to answer any questions and thank you for Bonnie and her contribution for helping us with a lot of the procedures.
Are you sure? Go ahead. With the PILT audit, when you look at that, is that looking at us just the way that we spend the money and making sure it's in compliance with the program?
So as you know, PILT, it can almost be spent on anything. And so within the county, we kind of have stated that those funds are spent on PILT. And so really, our PILT audit is focused on PILT. We select a sample of PILT expenditures, make sure the controls surrounding that are appropriate, and kind of look at it from that angle.
You don't look at, did we receive and? You're not auditing them essentially. I've been looking at PILT and wondering why we're not getting as much as many other counties and so, but they've got this whole complex formula. So I was wondering, maybe you looked at that?
No, we alternate from that angle. We test what you receive and find out what you receive, but then it's more about how you spend it.
Fair enough. Thanks. Go ahead, yes.
I just wanted to say, great job, Bonnie, Christina, for all of your hard work. I know how big of a deal these audits are, especially with federal dollars and everything else that goes on, so thank you for the work you do.
Thank you for that because you echoed Christina, Bonnie, and Amber. Thank you for a great audit, you know? Nothing in there to jump out, so it's nice to have no significant findings, so thank you. Roy?
No, just would only echo what you two said.
We have a treasurer here. Anything?
Yes, sir.
You agree with all that?
Sounds pretty good to me.
Christina, anything?
No.
Okay. Thanks for working with the auditors, everybody. I appreciate it. So I believe at this point in time, since there's not any questions, the audit's been presented, we probably need a motion to approve the audit, right? So I would entertain a motion that the audit for fiscal year 2019, the audit report, be approved?
Somed.
Okay, so motion from Commissioner Schoenfield. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Loeb. Any more discussion? All who was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Audit is accepted. Thank you very much. Good job. So we appreciate it and I hope your trip is safer. Well, we're safe. We just got delayed.
We're safe. Yeah, that's why my trailer caught on fire.
Oh, my God.
It was closed for 45 minutes for that.
That'll do it. Well, glad you're here. Glad we could, uh, you stayed and waited for you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being flexible with that. I'm prepared to talk on my phone if my vehicle is necessary, but.
Awesome. Well, we gave Bonnie the option to present for you. She just, she said, "That didn't work very well." Amber, I'm telling you.
What's the thing here? She owes me.
Is there any other business before the commission? No. Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn? Moved. We've been moved?
Do you want?
Adjourned.